This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, everybody, calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for March 1st, 2022 at 6:02 PM. And could we please start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. All righty. Well, we are, we have a quorum. Joy is going to be about 20 minutes late, I think, and I haven't heard from John. I don't know if anybody else has, but we assume he's coming. So I think we'll be here in a minute or two, so we'll just get going anyway. Anybody have any thoughts or comments or words of wisdom for this evening? It's just nice to have a new month and maybe a new beginning. I don't know.
I hope so.
Yes.
Need more.
One more step towards spring? I'm not quite sure, but...
I just want to acknowledge the Friends of the Council on Aging. I went there today just to give an update from the student interns and the project they're doing. But, you know, that's an organization that is there to support our seniors and with fundraising. I know we also have a Friends of Open Space and a Friends of the Library. But anyway, I just think we just should make sure we recognize on a regular basis that there's a bunch of very hardworking people that are there to support the populations they represent.
Very good. Absolutely. Okay. Good. All right. Francine, anything? If not...
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, so tonight we don't have any, any public hearings. Open time for the public if we have anybody who would like to talk about anything that isn't on the agenda, and I don't see too many people there for that. So let us jump into our presentation for tonight. Uh-oh. Hope that didn't go away. Anyway, we'll worry about that when we get there. We have some folks from Ty &amp; Bond. David Partridge and William Hardy are here representing Ty &amp; Bond. One is, David is the Vice President of Ty &amp; Bond, and William Hardy is the Chief Operating Officer. And William, my guest Bill, you were, you were one of the original consultants, if I understand correctly, on the old C consultant set of reports that was done...
He was the project manager on the design, actually the study, and then the design.
This goes back, what, 15 years at least, or thereabouts?
Yeah, it was around 2000.
Yeah? Okay. All right. So this is all related to...
Only two years.
Yeah, this is all related to the Hamden Pond's...
Long time ago. We started the study back in 89.
Was it really? My goodness. Wow. So this goes back that long to the Hamden Pond situation. And we did have, and I'm sure you know, we had members of the Hamden Pond's Association here a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
And they gave us an overview of what, what was happening and that they'd been in touch with you. So we'll turn it over to you. You have the floor for 15, 20 minutes, whatever you need, and we'll...
You have a copy of the proposal that we had sent in?
Task 1 and Task 2. Yes, we did have a copy of that.
Okay. Well, thank you. Again, I'm Bill Hardy and Dave Partridge. Yeah, we were contacted, actually, Jerry Swanson had contacted us. This is back a couple of months ago now, a few months ago, and said that they were residents of the Hamden Pond's was thinking of, would like to look at having the sewers resurrect that and see if they can get things constructed. So Jerry had known that I was, I was associated with the project back, back then, so she contacted me to come in to talk with them, and we, we spoke. And so it's been 2000, you know, back in 2000 was the design, so it's, you know, this is actually a layout of it. Just, I know it's not on the television right now, but, you know, what it was essentially was going to be sewerin' around the north side of the pond. And then everything was going to be flowing in green here. These are gravity sewers, and they were going to be coming to some pump stations and been pumping all the way back across and then down into an existing pump station that was in Westfield. And that may or may not be the, the current solution, because we don't know, based on a few factors, you'd want to take a look at it. As for instance, I don't know what, if anything, has been changed from a development standpoint around here.
There's more building, I would assume. There could be more building or something that's happened.
There could be more. There could be bigger buildings. Where we were putting sewers, because I know there was some, like going through some backyards, may not be there anymore, et cetera. We know that down on the bottoms, the southern side, on Westfield's side, there are some dry sewers that had been laid but aren't activated. They're not fully connected. And so Dave's been talking with, had talked with Mark Rosati over at Westfield recently to say, just kind of, Westfield's a client of ours also, so while we were saying, talking to Mark and, you know, what do you think would happen, you know, if they maybe considered maybe tying in over here and connecting over here as maybe a joint project, because that maybe allow us to eliminate some force main, maybe a pump station, maybe two. I probably would need to use one pump station, trying to keep some costs down. You know, costs inflated a lot since 2000, so things have changed a significant amount. So what we had proposed was to, to come in and do this sewer, sewerout validation assessment, really to assess, take a look at, Dave and I and another engineer would come out and just walk the site, spend the day walking everything, figure out what do we got here. We'd get ahold of the, the old plans from, from SEA. I'd still know who's over there to, to give them a call. And, and then we would start to look at, does the layout that was, was planned back in 2000, does it even make sense anymore? Do we need to, I, I, my guess is most of it is going to stay in place. It's a matter of, do we tweak things here and there? Do we have to realign it? Can we eliminate a pump station? There'd be two alternatives. Do we just keep on going the way we are around, back around, or do we look at connecting into Westfield and talk to them about having some type of a joint project to connect the sewers down there? So looking at those different alternatives, then we can come up with some, some costs for the, for the town to start to plan on as to what is this going to be, because this, what was back then is going to be significantly more now. We'd have to look at it, you know, as you say, this house has been developed, maybe houses have changed, and maybe there's certain houses that can't be serviced by gravity, need to have a, have a grinder pump to get up into it, or maybe we don't need to have that anymore. It's, it's things like that. Try and make sense of what we have, what was proposed, adjust it a little bit, and make a system that would work cost effectively for the, for the town. And then what we would look at also is, you know, because cost of construction's a lot of money these days, is, can, if we, depending on how we laid out the system, could it be phased? For instance, if, if we were going to connect in over in Westfield, over this side, it might be, well, you say, hey, Bill, we don't have all the money to do the whole project right now. Maybe we have to do components. Maybe we do one side here and tie in, and we come over and do the other part at a later date. Those are the type of things we would want to talk to you about, to try and see, develop a plan that would, try to fit within your bonding capacity, you know, you know, you're trying to get SRF loan and so forth like that. But, you know, you're trying to work within whatever funding you have, and I, you know, you'd have to, that's something you'd have to look at, as to what your bond issue is and so forth. So we would look at the layout of this, I'd make adjustments, look at what the cost impact is for different, two alternatives, whether we just stay with this, or could we connect in over Westfield, and then can we do some type of phase that would help out to reduce the cost down or, or spread it out over so many years so we can, don't have that big hit at once.
So you might end up with two options.
Possibly.
Possibly, or at least something, but you're, you're going to develop, what I understood here, you're going to also try and develop the probable construction cost.
Correct.
Whatever you are proposing as an option.
Yeah, because until you really know that, then you, you know, it's like...
And just for those of us that weren't around in 2000, myself included, what, what were the stumbling blocks back then? I'm assuming cost was one. Do we, what was, do you remember what the cost of the program was?
We were at, what was it, 3.3, 3.5 million dollars? Yeah.
So 4.5 million construction cost.
4.5 million, yeah. And we'd got to the town meeting for construction money, and we lost by, it needed a 2/3 vote, I think, and we lost by three or four votes.
Oh, really? Okay.
And we, those were on, that were on, we remember that night very well. It's like we were so close.
And at the time, there was room to be tying into Westfield. I mean, they had the capacity to allow that.
And they still do.
They still do.
They're only running, I believe, around, they're around 60% capacity or something like that. It's interesting, because back, back in the, when we were designing it in the mid to late 90s, when we went over to talk with Westfield, and I remember going over there with town and myself, and we went over to talk with them, and I remember the DPW director said, you don't want to tie into Westfield. I said, no, we really wanted to tie into Westfield. No, you don't want to tie in. We don't, they didn't, they didn't want us, because they were trying to minimize the amount of flow coming into the plant. At the time, they were looking at an expansion of the plant, an upgrade of the plant. And then they find DP stepped in, and they finally, we negotiated some terms to be able to come in, but then, and then it just got stalled at the town meeting that one night.
Understood. Okay.
So that's where we, you know, that's where the proposal is. And then after that, we'd come in, we'd sit down with you folks, talk about it. This is what we got. This is where we go. And then should you decide, then, you know what, let's go to the next step, and we're going to have to update the design. It's been a while, and then the, things have changed, then we'd have to, you know, Jerry had asked me for a task to put, help the town put together an RFP, request for proposals, so you can go out and solicit proposals from engineers to, to do the work for the design and then construction. Any other thoughts, Dave? Yeah, so that's, that's where we are. And so it's just really place it before yourself as to, you know, if that's something you'd like to proceed on.
So just to fill us in, I'm assuming that certainly we don't have money in the budget for this at the moment, so we would be looking at using ARPA money perhaps to fund this study. Is that right?
Correct. And then depending on the final construction cost, if we look at utilizing some ARPA funds for construction or the, some of the federal infrastructure programs that are going to be coming, coming down.
And that's the key, is you can get that federal infrastructure money. That'll be big.
Yeah, I have a question. So could you lay out what cost an individual homeowner might have? So if this, if this project goes through and the money, funding's available, you update all the plans and help with the bidding process and the RFP, RFQ, whatever. Do individual landowners have an opportunity to apply for low-interest loans or something, or is it all on the town to get this to a certain point where they're connected and they don't have to put out anything at all there? Is it basically, are there any costs that are generally incurred by the landowner homeowner?
There will be. I don't have the cost, because we do, but yes, the way it was proposed is we would get SRF funding, state revolving loan for the low-interest loan money. If we can get any of the other federal money, that'd be fantastic, because it would really help a lot. And then, way you go about funding a project like this is, there may be, you can either put it, a portion on, on the general taxes, but a lot of it was going to be placed on users as, under tie-in costs and user, basically, there was, you can, and we looked at it different ways. You can look, based on, called equivalent dwelling units, you know, that a, a single-family home would pay X amount, or you can base it on frontage of, of property. Because if you have a property that's 100 feet long, and another one that's 500, or you got a big piece of property of 1,000 feet, well, they would pay potentially more, because they, you'd subdivide that property and have, you know, have more benefit for that. So there's, we come up with a different recipe, so to speak, of, of how you want to go about it. And it's something that we would talk with you about as to, here's the different options. How would you, how best to go about it? A lot of it, because this is so isolated down in the ponds area, the majority of it was going to be on the homeowners at the time. When you have a, if there was a sewer system that was going to say, up here in the center of town, let's just say, we have town hall, you got schools, you got other, you have municipal facilities, there's a larger share on the, within the municipality itself. But when it's down there, and that was one thing, is like, some of the folks that were outside of the ponds area at that town meeting was like, well, why would we want to pay for that when we're not going to be benefiting from it? Well, you benefit indirectly because of housing costs and, you know, and, you know, taxes and so forth.
Do you know offhand if, with the residences, I think we heard there were 100 homeowners perhaps in Hamden Pond's area?
Yeah, it was, it was somewhere around that 100.
That's what was my memory.
Do we know offhand that there are some currently connected into Westfield at all? Are there any?
No, I don't believe so, because everything is, well, over there, it's all on the dry side.
Their sewer's on the west side.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the sewer's down, I mean, their sewer comes up here, and we were going to come down here and connect into it. So they, they, there wasn't anything for them to connect in right now. So unless someone else has done something, I don't know, but right now, there is nothing.
Yeah, so we're really kind of starting from scratch.
Unlike, like Francis up on, you know, going, there are some folks like up on the East Hampton side who are actually tied into East Hampton, you know. You know, one thing we had also talked with at the time, I remember talking with Bill Fuqua with, he used to be with the city of Holyoke, as to whether or not Holyoke wanted to contribute, you know, participate in some connections or not. But right now, everything, everyone, believe it was 100-plus homes were, would be on the system.
Would they be in, with part of the study, would that look at how many homeowners would access public sewer?
Yeah.
And how would you incentivize it? I mean, I could see a homeowner saying, don't have sewer now. I mean, we would want, if we're going to invest in this project, we would want as many people as possible to sign, sign on, especially if this, but if there's going to be cost associated with an individual homeowner, is there something built in that would in some way incentivize people to join up?
Could you stand up with the mic so everybody can hear you? Thanks.
First of all, we'd have to, what we have to do is figure out, what's the cost of the pie? We have to figure out, what's the cost of the project? And, and once we have that number, we'd say, well, how many pieces of pie do we want to cut this into? So if we do a count of the current houses and that have frontage along every pipe that, that's installed here, you could say it's divided by that amount. But then there are some, some other properties, as Bill was alluding to, that might, there might not be a house on it, but it has 500 feet of frontage. And based on whatever the zoning is for that area, they could carve it up into two or three lots, or even someone could build a, a road up the hill to tie it in. This study would not factor that, because that would be a discussion. We'd probably get some input from someone from town who thought of what the feasibility is, because, but we could do estimates of what that number is, to then figure out how many slices, what the big number is, and divide by how many users will be. And it might, it will range, because you might put the sewer by someone's property, but they may never build it. It might, it might be encumbered by wetlands, so they can't really build it anyways. So we would come up with a rough number, just to get an order of magnitude cost per unit.
But to, to your question on how do you incentivize them to tie in early, you know, some communities will have, when you, you develop a sewer use ordinance, and sometimes they'll put in, like if you're within 150 feet of, of the sewer, it's mandatory, you must tie in. Sometimes they'll have a, an early discounted price to tie in, and take it now, within the first year, or forever hold your peace. And then after that, the cost goes up. And sometimes you have an automatic fee that is just automatically, whether you tie it in or not, you have to pay X amount of dollars for that pipe, because it's going in front of your home, any, your house or your property anyways. So some of it is like, it's just a mandatory type of thing.
Okay. All right. Questions? John?
But those are things that when we go, when you go through that and you get then into the design phase, and you, we end up having multiple meetings, have public hearings, public meetings to talk about, here's the options for you folks, for the residents, to talk about what makes sense. And it's a, you know, sometimes you get a, you know, pretty difficult way to, to handle that part of, because that's the big nut, you know. And people don't always, I, I had a project once that we met time after time and time, and they didn't under, they said they understood, but until they, until that day one, when they had to write the bill, and I, I remember saying, you just wait for that day one, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh my goodness, you think, you know, the end of the world's hit. But it was like, we never heard this. We must've had six to seven different meetings talking about it. So it's something people need to understand.
Sure. Yeah. John?
So first of all, I'm sorry I was late, but the, this is building off a, a study in 2000, which that study in 2000 was for the, the entire town, right?
Well, it was, it was a study, and then in 2000 was the actual design. We actually did...
For the entire town or just the ponds?
We designed the ponds.
The ponds.
We'd be in SEA, my previous firm I was with.
Yep. So I, I guess, why are we talking about this? Are we talking about it because there is significant breach that's causing issues to the state resources that are there, i.e. the ponds? Are, do we have multiple failures, or is this, which I doubt, because there's money available now for ARPA, and this is why, this is the forefront. Why is this topic time-sensitive?
Remember, we had the Hamden Pond's Association here a couple of weeks ago.
I do, and I still don't understand why, other than, I mean, I, I get it, if, you know, as a homeowner myself, if I could be on a sewer system, I would instead of a septic, but that's not an option where I am. And, and so I, I need to understand why we, why folks are advocating for us to allocate resources to a portion of the town. Now, I get it, if it's the entire town, then it's a blanket statement, but I'm being, I assume at some point, I'm going to be asked to vote to authorize money for a specific core group of people in the town that's not going to benefit the entire residency. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
Right. So how is this a town responsibility and not a homeowner's responsibility to fund this? Which kind of goes to your point of, the cost is X, and therefore, these 100 homes, just to use a, a Y, these 100 homes are going to have this cost, shouldn't be X divided by Y, and therefore, here's your individual assessments to put in the sewer system. Why should the rest of the town supplement the cost?
I don't know that they're saying that they are yet. I mean, the, I mean, what we're talking about is just a study to revalidate whether the plan that was done in 2000 makes any sense.
Who's, who's paying for the study?
The study?
The taxpayers?
The study would come out of the ARPA money.
Which is the taxpayers.
Which is that. And this, the two tasks that were presented, there's two tasks here, and the budget, total budget is 12,800. So 9,000, 9,800 for the first task, and then 3,000 for the RFQ/RFP part.
Right. So...
Going to go forward.
So on, so just based on that knowledge, if we are going to break down our ARPA money of 1.8 million, times the number of taxable parcels in the town, and which that number will, 12,000 will be far below that assessment, and we say, this is your ponds assessment, you guys want the money for your sewer system, therefore, you get $290, to make up a number, because I'm doing the math in my head, per taxable property. That's how you want to spend it? You can do it. But why are we taking money from other sections of the town?
Well, let's face, let's face it, the balance of the operating budget goes to the school, and not everybody has kids in school. So, I mean, you have to look at it a little bit differently. I think it's a water quality and a health issue.
Which is exactly where I thought the answer was going to go, not to interrupt, but I believe I had the floor. So if the issue is really, we're protecting the pond's water.
Correct.
This is a state issue, and therefore, the state should be paying this bill, not the town, and, and not the residents of this town. That's my point.
Correct. But the state will not pay for a study like this. This, when you get into the construction of it, they would participate in either funding and possibly some of the federal funding that may come out, hopefully. But it is, this is all, this all comes down to protecting the natural resource down there. And because, yes, they've had some, you know, water systems, but they had problems back then, back in 2000. You know, there was issues back then, and you get, when you have houses on top of houses around a, a body of water like that, this contamination that goes in. And that's really to protect them. And yes, it's, you know, it's not a, I have, I live in Holland, and I happen to live around a lake. And, and before that, I used to live upland, so I was one of the uplands, Northlake people. But I've come to appreciate that, that resource is a resource for the entire town, at least in our town, because it means a lot. I mean, it means a lot, not only from a natural resource, but also property values, which then equates to tax dollars. And, and they're, they're, the folks that came to us were saying, you know, they're, they're concerned with the quality of the, of the water down there, and it just only gets worse over time. And so that's why, you know, Westfield had put sewers in, they just haven't connected them all in, but they had the foresight that they knew sooner or later, they need to do something. And when you have funding, a federal funding program like this that comes out, it's something called shovel-ready. And you want to be shovel-ready to secure funding that come, that comes out. And it's not often that you get this potential. It's not like it's guaranteed, but you have this potential. So they, they thought, let's, we got this situation, let's assess where we go from here. They may, it may be that it's just going to be too costly to go any further. But it's something, until you just look at it and validate and get some, some initial costs, you can't do that, that planning. You know, this is, I understand, it's a small little money to, to figure out, and I'm not trying to sell it, honestly, I'm just trying to, it's a small amount of money to figure out from a planning standpoint, from yourself even. How do we handle that? How do we, how do we, is this something that maybe it's something we really need to spend more money on to, right now, to do this, to handle the, the situation? So it's something that's been, was needed way back then. I mean, we did the study back in 89, we did it, and that was an update of an old study. And this has been, you know, this has just been kicking the can down the road for many, many years.
Yeah. And I would just, I would just say for the, for the record, you know, if, if the end result is protecting the water resources, then I'm all for it. But I think that's a town-wide benefit. And I'm not disagreeing with any of you set. I'm just, my own talking points here. But the, I personally think that, again, we have limited means of what we can spend. We have limited money right now, one-time money, 1.8 million, and we've already spent some, yes, to benefit, you know, those that choose to get the vaccine, which is great, you know, $600 a pop. But if, I guess it's my way of saying, I, 12,000, fine, drop in the bucket. I'll make the motion to, to allocate ARPA funds for...
We're not even there yet, John.
But I'm just saying, I'm, I'm making a motion. I say, I would. I would. Do it, to do this, the question is, we do the study, do the study, and then what do we do? Sit it on the shelf for another 12, 12 years? You know, what are we going to do? We do a lot of talking in circles. So at this point, I'll stop, but...
I think this came to us through the Board of Health originally. And part of this, if I'm not mistaken, there was, several years ago, there was major water failure in the wells over at Hamden Pond's. Every, every year, every couple of years, I believe CONCOM pays with the state and the homeowners association at, at Hamden Pond's to do algae control on the lake, which has increased over time. There's, there's all sorts of invasive weeds and so forth, clogging up the, the pond over there as well, rather. So I mean, there's, there's a wide variety of things that I think the town has been involved in to try and solve this problem over time, and it has sat, because nobody's picked it back up again. And we do have some, some limited resources with the ARPA money coming up. So to be able to be shovel-ready, I think there's, there's value in that. I mean, there are many grants that could be out there, whether it's federal grants, might be EPA or somebody else that's out there, or water, water protection grants, or other things that are out there besides the infrastructure money that hopefully will come someday from the federal government. So there's, there's sources out there. I mean, I'm hoping that this would prove that it could be something that would be, would be actionable. It's not going to be just another study to sit on the shelf again for another 20 years. I mean, I think that, that wouldn't be our goal. But I mean, I think you've got to start somewhere and to reactivate it and revalidate whether this is even, you know, if it's gotten worse, how, how bad has it gotten? Is that the same logical plan? Does it need to go in a different direction? All of that needs to be thought out long before any money appears on our doorstep. And so to me, I would not, I would support that notion. Anybody else? Joy, ready?
I don't have any questions. I'm supportive of it.
I think, so where we, where we are with this, at this point in time, this, this was good just to get this on our radar, along with the Hammond and Ponds Association that came in a couple of weeks ago. And what we'll be doing is, hopefully tonight, we're going to be discussing an application form that we're doing for the ARPA funds that we are going to be allocating in town. And so with this background and what they've already given us, you know, we'd end up having this as a portion of a proposal to, to spend the ARPA money on Project X, for example. Okay, so this at least gets you guys a little bit ahead of the game, the Hammond and Ponds Association ahead of the game, by having written out something already. But we would hopefully end up with an application form that would then be part of this whole process, so that we can go through and take a look at the various needs and priorities that people are coming to us with and various town departments have in mind, and then be able to make some decisions based on that. So this is a good preliminary step. It's right in time for what we're going to be doing over the next month or two.
Sure, okay.
Can I just ask? Will, will your feasibility study give us some idea of how quickly or how much time we have in order to gear up for something like this? We'll make, you know, in terms of, does it have to be done immediately? Do we have time? And then overall, how much time, once we do start, will it take to completion? Are we talking years here? Just to give us, put it into some timeframe for us?
Yeah, just, just as I need. Say we got to go ahead in a couple of months, let's just say, you know, so we do, this isn't going to take that long. So we can, say we're done by June, let's just say. And then you have to decide, all right, let's, and yeah, let's, let's go forward, let's do the design. So you get, you know, you get to go to RFP and find the engineer, whether it's us or whomever. You start the design in the, in the fall, and then, um, depending on the magnitude of the design, you know, maybe we can get it out, out to bid in the, in the spring.
But will you tell us the immediacy of this problem that has to be addressed? Is that part of your feasibility?
In your, in your study?
In your study.
How, how urgent is the problem, I guess, is to put your estimate?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we, I, based on information I can, we'd have to get from Board of Health as to, which is what we did before. They'd have to give us some information of, you know, what has been the frequency of pumpouts? Have there been failures done of the systems? I recall back then, they were testing of the pond, so, you know, what, what have been, are the test, what are the test results? You know, those are things that we could, you know, we weren't planning on doing all that, but we, it's not that hard to get that information and just look at it and give you an idea of how bad, bad it is, you know? But I agree with you, what you said, John, is, you know, if you're going to do something, you don't want to say, do this, and then 20 years from now, we're, we're talking, hey, we got to do a study again, because we don't know what we. You know, it's either, sooner or later, you got to do something, you know?
Would I could answer a question?
Yeah.
The immediacy of the problem, it's a current problem. And, I mean, is it going to change between this year and next year, or five years from now, it's just going to continue to occur? So the immediacy is when you want to start fixing the problem as opposed to where it's going to turn and point of no return. I'm not sure. And it's certainly not what we're going to do. What we're, all we could say is, by connecting 100 to 150 houses, the threat of those septic systems, when, once everyone connects to the sewer system, that goes away, and the risk is reduced.
And all, you know, you mentioned that, you know, you're doing the lake treatment every so many years. That company knows how, how, you know, what, and the lake, the association would know how bad it is, you know, based on how, how much the, the growth of the plants are overcoming the pond. You know, what it may be 20 years from now was 20 years ago is a lot different than what it is right now. I'm, I bet it is. And, you know, it's just a matter of time. So it's really one of those things that it just, really getting to a point now, it's like, when can you fit it in? And then it's, it's, costs just keep going up. You know, and sooner or later, you need to just bite the bullet and do what everyone knows what has needed to be done for a long time.
I have one more question. So I understand and recognize that you're not assessors. I assume you're not. So I'm going to ask you an assessor question. But based on your individual knowledge and experience, a home on a septic system that is now on a septic sys, I mean, sorry. A home that's on septic that is now on sewer, does that increase the value of the home, property? Equal? There's no change, or does it negatively impact the property?
I'd say it depends, because there's some, there may be homes down there on tight tanks versus on septic systems. If it's on a tight tank, it increased pretty quickly and dramatically. Versus on your septic system, not as, as much right away, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think. I mean, it helps. It depends, it depends on the, you know, and what, it depends, each situation is a little differently. You know, there may be also that they have, they may be restricted with their septic system. They want to do more on their property, but they can't because.
It's the field.
They can't, with the field. Like in my house here, my, my septic system's about this big. I don't have anywhere else to go. So a sewer would help me out a lot, because I could do something on my property, which I can't do right now.
I would say it depends on whether they have a Title V system. If it meets the requirements right now, then.
And for those listening at home, just going a little bit on Title V and why that's important.
Well, Title V is a septic system that's designed per the state standard. So a lot of old, uh, old lots that might just have a small septic system, or, or maybe they, there's only so much land. And in order to really meet Title V, you need to have a lot more land than some of those properties probably have themselves. So I haven't been in the market for buying a house of late, but I know that when I was 15, 20 years ago, that if someone's house was trying to, you're trying to sell something that did not meet Title V, someone would have had to spend 15, 20 grand, whatever it was to cut, build a new septic system, or you couldn't even build, you couldn't even do anything to the house. But I am not an assessor.
Right, no, I, no, I understand that.
But that's a good point, though, you know, there may be houses that just can't sell right now, because.
Well, I believe the town's about to take possession of one of them, because of that very nature.
Can't make Title V, or they can't expand the house because they can't meet Title V, whatever it may be. So in those cases, it would mean a lot.
And one of the biggest differences, if you can't meet Title V, you cannot finance the property. So you're stuck with basically, if someone, a cash sale, you know?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about Task Two? It's just, on the proposal, Task Two. It sounds like the, the whole part of Task Two is to get it to the point where there's an RFP and RFQ. And can you just explain the, the first part? It says, assist the town in development of an RFP or RFQ for the procurement of an engineering firm for the design. Can you explain what it means by an associated services?
Well, they would be, associated services could be expanded into the construction phase. So you just got one firm, because usually you want one firm that designs and goes through the construction. Associated services may also be helping with the user system, a user charge system, developing sewer, user ordinances, et cetera, things like that.
It could also, when we say engineering, sometimes we don't, associated services means survey and property type easement work. Because if, if all the sewers, many of the sewers are, are in, along the roads, and if they're public roads with sufficient width, you could put the sewers in the road. But sometimes these are, might be quite narrow, where you might have to put the sewer along people's front yards, and you might have to acquire property or easements.
Could have to also, we would likely, the firm would have to be, represent you and help you during negotiations for an intermunicipal agreement with, with Westfield permitting, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Good, okay. All right. No other questions? I think we'll call it quits on that for tonight. So thank you very much for coming. Appreciate your, your attention to the matter, and then reviving a few old things here to bring back to us.
We have our cards. If you have any questions, give either one of us a call, and Ed knows where to get a hold of Dave.
I know where to get a hold of both of you now, but.
All right, thank you very much. Good night.
Night, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
All right.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, moving on to quarterly reports. Okay, so I believe we are down to one out of the four tonight, personnel policy. Mr. Lumra, I think Ad hoc tech were going to come, and they could not meet last night. So they didn't validate their, their presentation, and I'm not sure what's happened with Capitol or Cemetery Commission. But John, why don't you go ahead with PQB, and Ed can fill us in on what's happening with the other commissions later on?
Sure, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that you each individually received the one-page update from me. But for the purposes of those listening at home, I'll just quickly read it into the record. And I'll just clarify that this paper was written in, um, by myself without consultation of the committee as a whole. So I'm the sole author of what's in here, based on my observations and opinion of what's going on at the committee level. So our current priority is activities. We meet monthly as needed to approve all PRFs and PCFs, ongoing review of the manual priority on suggestions, edits from department heads. The current committee is merely a placeholder, as the committee feels that the current process is antiquated and no longer needed in its current form. Regarding the question of budget spending, status, and concerns, the committee does not currently have a budget. The committee would urge the select board and voters to abolish the PPPB and fund a part-time exempt confidential employee slash HR generalist that is appointed by the select board and reports on a day-to-day basis to the town administrator. It is important to note that the select board should continue to act in the position of HR director, as it currently does. Personnel staffing updates. Committee is a five-person committee, three elected and two appointed. There are no paid positions. Currently, the committee is made up of two appointed members, a finance member and a select board member, and one appointed person for one of the three vacant elected seats. Our plans and events for the next four, six, four to six months is the committee is doing the required work until the next annual town election, where they will look to pass the work to the newly-elected residents that step forward to fill the vacant seats. At that time, the two appointed members may step back and act more in a supportive role to the committee. Long-term issues for the select board consideration and planning. The lack of proper HR tools on staff will continue to cost the town and taxpayers' funds without proper investment in human resources. Three examples are, the war on talent is on, the trend is, is to look real, which obviously I forgot whatever I was typing there. But the mere fact is, and what's going on in today's economy with COVID, people are working remotely. You're seeing it with the resignations that are coming forward to us through the town. It's because the, the people that are, the majority of the people that are resigning are going to take municipal jobs in other communities that, for all intents and purposes, have better packages to offer. Wages are on the rise, that's a general fact that's happening across all, all borders. And then offering perks that matter. The old days of 30 years ago, working for municipality and having a golden parachute or a pension, times have not kept up with that. In closing, the town employees are at the forefront of everything that we do. They are collectively on the front lines. They are the ones that the citizens interact with. And if we continue to ignore the underlying issues of truing up, my words, how we treat our employees, we will continue to have vacancies and underlying issues. Yes, you can hire at a minimum wage, but you may not get the level of experience and/or professionalism that you want. We get what we pay for, and it's that simple.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have questions? Just, I just have one. What's happening in terms of, I realize this is your recommendation, your personal recommendation, but with the DLTA HR effort that is happening, is there some shared HR resource that we're going to be benefiting from, or not?
Well, there's.
Oh, you're going to, you're going to get that in your report? Okay, I'm sorry.
Hopefully, but we're going to have to pay for it regardless.
Yeah.
Right. So the next step on that, I believe there's a three-hour meeting scheduled for this Friday, where the town administrator, two members of the select board.
Okay.
Potentially other members, and the treasurer.
And the treasurer.
And the treasurer will participate with the consultant. Southampton has advocated through that process that, um, let me clarify my statement. I have advocated on Southampton's behalf through that process that I see the end goal of understanding that we're a seven-and-a-half-hour workday, that we're looking for a 15-hour generalist, non-SHRM-certified individual to step in and help support the whole process. The other communities are looking for somebody on potentially a two-to-four-hour monthly availability that they may potentially reimburse the town of Southampton for.
Okay.
Out of that fif, out of our 15 hours.
Okay, we'll get to it when we get to Francine's report in more detail then. Sorry, okay. If nothing else, so Ed, just fill us in in terms of what happened to our other three reportees for tonight?
Sure. Judith Conlon Miller was not available, and she will be here on March 15th. The technology committee had a little snafu with the posting their last meeting, so they didn't finish their, the reports that they intended to do tonight. So they, they will probably be here on the 15th to catch up also, and I did not hear back from Capitol.
Okay. You know, Affan, if there's any update from Cemetery Commission about the fence? That's why, that's why we wanted her to come. Exactly. I guess we have to wait two more weeks to find out. She had been out of town when she was originally scheduled, and I thought this was supposed to meet her timeline, but obviously not. So we'll try again for the 15th and see who we can, we may have to shuffle around a couple of the ones that are there. We'll see what, what our schedule looks like for the 15th. But anyway, okay. Capitol, I imagine we'll be talking about that at some point in terms of looking at issues related to the budget process. So we'll hold off on that for a little bit. Next on reports, how about Ed, Town Administrator Report?
Sure. If I could, point of order before we get there. If I, I completely understand that I may not get a second, but I'd like to make a motion.
True.
So.
You may.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the spending of $12,800 for the tie-in bond proposal dated January 26, 2021, and the source of funds to be the ARPA funds, recognizing that it is 7/10ths of 1% of the ARPA funds that we came, and that while we may be waiting for an application, I believe them attaching the proposal that we already have before us is more than adequate for the needs, so that we can continue to move this forward.
Okay. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
If we're asking to, for example, the Board of Health to go back and fill out an application, so we have a paper trail on all the ARPA requests. If we're asking Caitlin, for example, to, or Jerry, to fill out a form that says, you know, the COVID test kits and also the two COVID vaccine clinics. Who would be the entity in town representing this project? Would it be the Board of Health?
Would it be the Board of Health? That would have been my first thought. I don't know.
Would it, would it be the Board of Health or the town residents that came forward already?
Well, I don't know.
That's who, that's who's asking.
Where the water, no, the water has nothing.
This one, this one does not fit neatly into a basket. So I'm just going, I'm going to, and it depends on how the select board votes to allocate those funds. And actually, I would probably say the homeowners' association wouldn't even meet the nonprofit needs. So I don't believe that they could come forward and apply. So really, currently doesn't fit into highway, because we don't, don't have a sewer system. Doesn't fit into water, because it's a water system, not a sewer system. May or might not fit into Board of Health in a nice, neat little peg. And with all those, I could actually understand or see the select board turning around and looking down this way as you are right now and saying, would you please fill out the application for this, so.
I mean, this would be the proposal that would be attached to an application, essentially, is what.
Right, exactly.
Well, I feel like I do support this project. I think 20 years in the making, I think it's a huge environmental issue in town. However, we haven't even heard the report, which is happening tonight, on all the residents' preference for the ARPA funds, and we haven't approved the application form for the ARPA fund. So I support it, but I'm not sure I want to jump ahead and do, I mean, I think the COVID clinic and the test kits were very time-sensitive. I think that I'd just as soon hear and have people chime in on the application, the draft of the application, and the presentation on the, on what the residents asked for. I, I do support it, but I just feel like it's, I'd rather just do it in a little bit different order.
Okay. Yeah, I, I see it as ARPA being the source of the funds in this instance, but in the absence of ARPA, I think we need to know how serious the situation is. And so whether it's ARPA funds or other funds, I think it's an important study that we, that we, we have to complete, at least to get some answers to the questions and understand what obligations may be in our future. We got to understand what we need to do, and who needs to do it. I'm not saying it's all on the backs of the town, but we need to understand the problem better, and this is the first step. but we need to understand the problem better, and this is the first step to getting there.
And I believe Joy too, and from the CONCOM point of view, I know when I was liaison to CONCOM, there had been some work done about the treatment of the pond, and I can't remember if that's done annually or how frequently that's done, but
I forgot how frequently.
There should be some, some data too within CONCOM, so maybe it will end up being a combination of sort of CONCOM providing some information to the Board of Health and/or Ed to justify what's, what the need is here. Could we come back to it after we go through the application?
Sure. Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Or do we, I mean, I mean, I'm hearing here that people would like to hear the results of the ARPA survey on one side and look at the application draft. We could just hold it and come back before the end of the meeting on it? Or we could vote now?
Well, I, I respect the fact of, of holding it to review the ARPA data, but that's already been shared with the committee. It just hasn't been shared publicly, so I'm sure like myself, all the committee members have already reviewed the ARPA data.
Okay.
I guess at this point, I would say procedural-wise, there's a motion made and duly seconded. The next order, I'm not going to withdraw my motion.
Okay. All right, then all those in favor, let's have a vote. All those in favor of the motion on table?
Aye.
Aye.
No. I would have wanted to wait a little bit. I think we owe it to the public to talk about what the public request. I know we get to decide, but I just feel like, I just feel like it's just jumping ahead and we don't, I just, yeah. I mean, I think I would support it and I would support waiting on it, but I just feel like we owe it to the public to present the findings. Just because all of us have read it doesn't mean that it's been shared publicly yet.
No, it has not. Okay.
Right.
And?
No, I, I don't want to get into a debate.
And the chair would vote no as well. So it's a three to two, so the motion actually passes. Okay. So we would basically approve the amount of the, I think it's 12,000, sorry.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred? For this, with the proviso that the application, once approved, the application gets filled out.
Uh, no, that wasn't part of my motion.
Well, it has to have an application with it at some point in time. It isn't
This body hasn't made any vote to author, to mandate applications.
Well, I think we did say that we were going to create applications and do that. We've asked the Board of Health to go back once we create this application, which we have a draft of tonight, to go back and fill it out. But we agreed that we liked the model of one of the other towns, that we needed to track all of our allocations for ARPA ahead of time and know what we were spending it on.
And I don't disagree with any of that, but I disagree that, or I would clarify that no formal vote of this body was taken requiring it. Yes, I agree, that was the spirit of our discussion.
Okay.
But my motion was to approve $12,800 source of funding for ARPA to commence with the two phases of the tie-in bond, January 26, 2021 letter. That was the motion.
Okay. Well, and it passed three to two. Okay, moving on.
I have a question then. You've approved the funding, that's obvious. Is anyone authorized to sign the tie-in bond proposal at this point in time?
Do you? Point of order? Well, yeah, I can't just, I'm used to the school committee where I can just talk. Point of order? Is it or is it not accurate to state that lack of identifying somebody identifies the chair to sign?
It's usually the chair or the town administrator, one or the other. But usually we take a vote on it.
Did I, did I happen to see the proposal? Does it have all of our signatures? Is that the, am I thinking about?
I just lost it here. Hold on.
It just says authorized representative.
I don't think it does have ours.
Authorized representative.
It just says representative on it. Okay. He representative, so that could be, that could be Ed or it could be the chair.
So I would argue because a duly, a duly authorized vote was taken and recorded, it therefore instructs the chair to act on the accordance of that vote. But again, I ask the question under point of order. Am I incorrect?
Ed, do you have an answer? I don't. I would be glad to sign on it if, if I'm authorized to do so.
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to sign if I was authorized to. I just don't dare sign it under the current circumstances.
All right, let's, let's say that I will sign it unless anybody objects. As a duly authorized representative of the select board. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. I think we're on this town administrator report here.
All right, updates. As we prepare, prepare for the May annual town meeting, the select board should choose a date to open the warrant for articles to be submitted and also vote for a date to close the submission of warrant articles for the May annual town meeting. With the annual, the annual town meeting occurring on Tuesday, May 3rd, I would suggest that warrant article submissions be closed as of Wednesday, April 6th at noon in order to give town council time to review them and also have the warrant for town meeting developed. The PPPB will be rescheduling their public meeting for the proposed changes to the rules and regulations as it applies to employee benefits. It was discovered in the actual personnel bylaw that posting of the proposed changes is required a minimum of 10 days in a conspicuous place where the employees may see them before the public meeting is to take place. The town has received the amended permit from Mass DOT, which will allow the contractor, Gillerher Enterprises, to work in the state right-of-way on Route 10 to install approximately 70 feet of granite curbing to go along with the new Route 10 sidewalk project between Pomeroy Meadow Road and High Street. We should now have everything in place for Gillerher Enterprises to start the construction project this spring. Judy Zeronas continues to receive the annual town meeting reports completed by the departments and boards and committees. We have had a large number returned up until this point in time. The ongoing maintenance list for town hall, the three toilets and two fosses which were scheduled for repair were repaired last week and are working. A new push-button switch for the town hall main entrance handicap door has been ordered and will be installed this week. There was an issue with the heat in two of the offices, offices here in town hall, and BG Mechanical came today to repair that issue. And the main floodlight in the parking lot has had new bulbs ordered for it and will also be repaired. Upcoming select board meetings, March 15th and 29th. Select board meetings for April to be determined and annual town meeting, Tuesday, May 3rd.
All right. Any questions, anyone?
I just wonder if, are we going to talk later on about item one? About the warrant?
Yeah. It's not on the agenda as an item, so we could pick it up right here if we wanted to, to take a look at that date for the town meeting. The town meeting is set as May 3rd in terms of our, our bylaws, I believe, right?
Correct. First Tuesday in May. Madam Chair, I'll just, for purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that warrant article submissions be closed as of Wednesday, April 6th at noon.
Okay. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, or any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Can I just ask, Lucy, is, is that consistent with, I know your plans, okay.
I will send out a notification that they're open in the date of closure to all the departments and boards and committees and also put a posting on the town website.
Okay. All right. All right, and just as we're talking about annual town meeting, is there anything that we have to do related to further work with election officers, Board of Registars, anything like that in terms of? I remember last year we had to send out didn't we have to send out notices to the
We're in the
The parties?
Well, we're in the timeframe of, yes, sending out the notification for Board of Registars, so I'll check with Lucy on whose term is actually going to expire for this year.
Okay.
For Board of Registars?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, moving on. All right, select board reports. Joy, anything?
Sure, so none of the boards that I'm liaison to met in the past couple of weeks, but Conservation Commission did have a request. They wanted me to ask if the town would be okay with the Conservation Commission changing the entryway to Manhan Meadows to the railway adjacent to the Manhan Meadows Sanctuary for a new entry to their trail. The greenway doesn't have to be built yet for us to walk that way. They could use the grant money they have for other parts of the trail at Manhan Meadows rather than for the new bridge at the bottom of the hill. I think there's also issues with erosion at the current entrance of Manhan Meadows, and they don't consider that to be a suitable, stable, permanent entranceway, so they're asking if they can change the entryway.
I think Marla had written a note to Ed about that as well.
Yes.
So that's something, I don't know that we'll decide that tonight. I mean, that, that'll be a separate discussion with CONCOM or?
I'd say it's a separate discussion with CONCOM at all. It's going to have to actually fall around when we are actually able to acquire and close on that rail banking right-of-way agreement.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Which hopefully, we'll hear some updates on that.
Yes.
We know what the, what the plan was on that too.
I'll let them know at the next meeting.
So I think, you know, the, we're in the process of the rail banking and, and we will eventually have possession of that
And then we can
road, so that shouldn't be that big of an issue.
Okay, sure.
Timing may be a little bit tricky.
Okay, I'll let them know. They also wanted me to mention to the public that anyone who's walking their dogs on Conservation Commission-managed properties should not be leaving plastic bags of dog excrement along the trails or hanging from trees or shrubs. The town does not have a service that picks up those plastic bags, so they should be bringing them home for proper disposal. Their next meeting is March 7th at 6:00 PM. Planning board's next meeting is March, this Wednesday, March 2nd at 7:00 PM, and Housing Authority meets March 7th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. All right, good. Ready?
Community Preservation Committee met last Wednesday, the 23rd. They reviewed the proposal from the Water Commissioners to apply, they're planning on applying for a water protection grant, also requesting CPC funds to support the conservation of property on Palmer Meadow Road. There was a vote by CPC to support the project in general. We're just waiting for fund balances on the CPC. Ed is going to be hoping, we're going to get that, and they're meeting again next Wednesday, the 9th at 5:00. So hopefully we'll have that information so we can, and they're also asked questions about how the actual warrant gets written, when one is contingent upon grant money and then the other one is fully funded from CPC or other sources. So they're just looking for some guidance on that.
Those would actually be written by town council, so they need to provide us with basically the outline of what they want to do, and then we'll send that along to town council.
I think that'll happen next Wednesday. Public Safety Building Committee, there's a meeting scheduled right now for next Monday at seven, the 7th at 4:00, but depending on the discussion tonight and possible votes, I talked to Charlie over the weekend, and that might actually be pushed out a little bit depending on the discussion tonight. Council on Aging hasn't met in the last couple of weeks. They meet tomorrow at 4:00. But Senior Center is open, having regular group meetings and classes. There's a memory café planned for March 24th and April 21st. The program coordinated position is now posted. It's for 14 hours a week. Two nursing students from UMass continue to work on a project focusing on seniors and safety, increasing code red signups and other safety devices. They're having a workshop meeting that involved the two chiefs, public health and triad and everyone on April 13th at 11:00. And regarding the donation of the David Parsons money in his will, there was a meeting last week with attorneys Adonis Kemp and Ed Gibson for guidance on the process. The donation is a minimum of 2.5 million, providing there's a plan, a final plan by April of next year. Janet Kane and Joan Linehan are on the agenda for an upcoming select board meeting to request select board appointment of a feasibility committee for the, to put a committee together to hire someone to do a feasibility study on a new senior center. Like I said, the next meeting's tomorrow at 4:00, and lastly, Board of Assessors met yesterday at 4:00. They're continuing the recruitment of a principal assessor. The PCF to continue, Dave Zagorsky is on the agenda for tonight, up to 15 hours per week. They're addressing the usual work of the office. And their next meeting is two weeks from yesterday, so I think it's like the 6th, 14th of March.
Okay, thank you. All right. Francine?
Okay. The Norris School Committee met on February 18th and voted four to one to recommend that, to rescind the mask mandate with masks being optional rather than required for Norris students affected February 28th when the students return from vacation. Masks will continue to be required on the school bus. That recommendation was forwarded to the Board of Health who met on February 22nd. The school committee meets again on March 9th. The Board of Health agreed with the recommendation of the school committee to make masks optional for Norris students affected February 28th. And again, just repeating this, that masks will be required when students are on the school bus. They also voted to rescind the mask requirement in town hall and in public places in Southampton effective February 23rd. Masks are now optional. The Board of Health also voted to approve the use of an additional $2,000 for the health director's overtime for the remainder of this fiscal year, but did not indicate any transfer within their existing budget to cover it. They also voted to incorporate funds into fiscal year 23 budget to accommodate overtime, anticipated overtime for the health director. The bylaw committee met on February 22nd to revise the draft Doug bylaw based on comments from this board, and we will finalize those changes at our meeting on March 3rd. The final draft will be posted on the town website for comment, and a public meeting will be held later this month for in-person discussion of the draft. The dates for both will be posted later this week. The consultant who was hired by PVPC to conduct the HR feasibility study will conduct an interview on Friday, March 4th to gather information regarding Southampton's specific human resources needs. Interviews are also going on with other participating towns, the results of which will serve as the basis of a shared human resource, resource for small Western Massachusetts towns. Participating in that interview is the town administrator, the town treasurer, John Lumber, who's a member of the PQB and the select board as well as myself. And there'll be more information to follow once we have that interview under our belt. That's it, thank you.
Just one question on that. Am I wrong? I thought I had read somewhere that the masks were not, not necessary anymore on school buses.
That happened after the meeting.
Oh, okay.
It was either, I was gonna, yeah, it's either last Thursday or Friday, they voted that, but they did leave it up to the local school committee if they wanted to keep it.
That was, that was a state, a lift?
The feds. I just, that was federal, the buses are federal, yeah.
I'm only reporting what actually did happen.
I just wanted to clarify that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, John?
So my committees, the Hampshire Regional full meeting or regular meeting hasn't met since our last meeting. They will be meeting, I believe, next Monday. They did take, as reported, we reported at the last time we met that they voted to approve the budget. There was an error in the motion, and it was actually the preliminary vote. So the final vote on the budget for Hampshire Regional will happen on Monday. What that means to us is that the assessment cannot be greater than what the preliminary number was. And I believe there's discussion about where the additional 261 or 262,000 is going to come from, whether it's going to come from school choice or their version of free cash, which I understand has a different terminology that's escaping me right now.
Excess and deficiency.
Thank you, excess and deficiencies. So that, that is really the only update from the, at the high school level or Hampshire regional level. The Finance Committee, I did send a in preparation for today's meeting, I reviewed my notes and realized that I had committed to reaching out to the chair of the Finance Committee, so I did reach out via email today. I haven't heard back as to whether or not she would entertain a joint session of the Finance Committee and Select Board for Police, Fire and Highway as a means to more efficiently move through the budget process. I assume tomorrow I'll probably hear back, and I'll report through the chair on what that is. The Capitol Committee is now at, at least to my record, 10 months without a meeting. Not sure when they're going to meet. And PPPB did meet, and those results of that meeting will come up later on. And the town administrator's already commented about the handbook update in the process we need to go through to hold the public hearing.
So, did you say that you had already reached out to the Capitol Committee or to Margaret about, obviously in her meeting tonight on the quarterly report didn't happen, but have you been able to reach her at all? No?
I have not heard back, back from her as of yet.
I mean, we need to understand what's happening with the Capitol Committee. She's still the chair as far as we know, right? still the Chair as far as we know, right?
As far, well, as far as I've been told, yes.
Yeah.
Well, your requests for warrant articles include any capital request, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean...
I would kind of say that's kind of like budget, as long as we have the outline for them by, that date, I think we're fine.
Okay. Can I ask a question that's really, I think, I'm more of Francine. Is there a timetable right now for the Norris budget?
Joy would know, yeah. I think by their next, by March.
Yeah, so we're still on track for the original schedule. Our, the next Wednesday will be our first meeting or our preliminary meeting. We're required to hold two meetings on the budget, so that is the second Thursday. So I believe the fourth Wednesday of March will be the public hearing with anticipation of a vote to meet the April 1st deadline that the town administrator gave us.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, any other questions of those reports? If not, I'll just share a couple things here. On my end, the Ad-Hoc Grant Committee is meeting on March 9th. And we've got a couple of things coming up. The main one will be to take a look at the MVP Action Grant Process. That, there's a webinar on that, on that grant coming up on the 7th, I believe. And so we're going to take a look at that and see if there are projects out of the MVP Plan itself that would make sense for us to look for grant funding for. And then the Cost Efficiencies Committee is going to be meeting on March 10th. And people have had some assignments to take a look at there and hopefully are reaching out to get some costs in their minds of what, what actual costs are so they can propose some of their options and be able to tell us a little bit about whether there is a cost savings or it's more of an efficiency savings or time savings or what it might be. But we were looking especially for those things that would perhaps enhance our income, our revenue, rather, and also those that could be a cost savings. So those will be discussed on March 10th. And that's about it. Master Plan met just briefly to go through the, an update, which I'll be reporting on in another meeting. We met this past week to go through the status of the various committees that are representing, being represented on the Master Plan Committee to see what the updates were from housing, from planning, et cetera. And generally, people feel like there's a lot of movement in town, there's a lot of things happening. And a lot of things going on with zoning and with housing in particular that sounded very, very promising. So, a lot of good energy there, I think, in general. And that's about it, I think. So, if there's no questions on any Select Board reports, let's keep on moving at this point in time. All right, old business. Okay, first one on the agenda. This is going to be a revisit. Public Safety Building Committee charge. And I'm going to acknowledge that we're in the pickle that Mr. Lumber advised us we might be by going with appointments for the designated departments such as Select Board, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Finance, Historical. Those were pretty, pretty clear in terms of their, their, their structure, where those would come from. And we did put in four at-large members. So these were, as it was written, four members of the community or surrounding area with experience in engineering, construction, architecture, financial management, or previous public safety experience. We currently, as we noted at our previous meeting, we don't have any openings in that slot of the four. And again, tonight, later on, we do have another person that would fit that bill as a, as an engineer and having worked on other public safety complexes. So I decided I would bring this back to see what people's thoughts were, whether we stick with the charge as is and we don't appoint anybody else as an at-large member, or whether we consider amending the charge to add another slot for the at-large or any other ideas that the committee members may have. And that's why I wanted to also put the old business and have this discussion before we get to the appointments tonight. So things were a little bit out of, out of order on purpose to have this discussion first. So, anybody have any thoughts? Yeah, go ahead, John.
Could I just ask you to clarify what you're...
Yep.
If you could wave the magic wand, what would you like us to entertain?
Well, I think it's, it's, it's not an easy situation. I don't know that I'm totally in favor of adding another slot necessarily. At the same time, you know, we do have somebody that really meets the bill of what we had, that what we had wanted to do. So I'm partly looking for ideas. I'd kind of like to stay within the same structure, but I'm not quite sure how to do that. So, yes, Ed.
I have a thought for the Select Board's consideration. In this particular instance, the individual that has applied and is in the packet tonight, I think, has a lot of pluses to bring forward and be a help to this particular committee. So, I've thought about this and here's, here's an idea. You can throw it out the window or bat it around or what have you. Currently, I, as town administrator, are a member and a voting member of this committee. Here's my recommendation. Remove me as a voting member and counting member of this committee. Please make me an ex officio and keep me on the committee and add one at-large slot to make it five. So the total in the committee voting would still be 11. I would still be there for any advice or needed information, but I would not be a voting member.
So that would still leave us, okay, so that would get us a 12-person committee, but 11, an odd number voting. All right, well, that's an idea. Okay.
That's a reasonable solution. I guess next time foresight will be that we, we hold all applications and make decisions at the same time.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, I support Ed's recommendation.
So that's, that's an idea, okay. Joy has a question?
Do we have a representative from the Finance Committee?
In our package tonight, we do.
Okay, so that's...
Not appointed yet.
Not appointed.
The two other, the two other open slots were representative from the Finance Committee and a representative for the, from Historical.
Historical Commission.
Okay, so we have one person to...
We have their paper tonight for both of them.
Fill that. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yep. So we have both of those. And so those are open slots. If there had been nobody coming forth out of those, I might have made the motion that we collapse one of those committee ones into, into a public member, an at-large member. But we have them on the docket and they, they have come forth from both Finance and Historical tonight, so.
I, when I talked to Charlie about it and I reviewed the situation with him, who's the current temporary chair, and by the way, he's not interested in being the permanent chair, he also said, would it be possible to do like an associate membership so that someone would be voting sort of only if somebody's absent or whatever. So I told him I would just bring it here and see if, how people felt about that. I guess I've also been kind of concerned, Ed, since, other than the Select Board, you've joined Grant Committee, you've joined Technology Committee.
Every committee.
Joined Public Safety Building Committee, likely be involved in the also Senior Center initiative. Seems like, just kind of, want to just mention that, that it's a lot of...
Lots of committees, yeah. And lots of, lots of evening meetings. I mean, this is definitely after-hours meetings as well. All right, so I'm hearing one idea. Does anybody have another idea? Or does Ed's idea tend to meet with some favor? And if so, yes.
If there's no more discussion, I'll offer a motion.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Start the ball. So I'll make a motion that we amend the Southampton Public Safety Building Committee 2021 Committee Charge as, for whatever date we approved, December 21st, 2021, to remove the town administrator as a voting member of the 11-member body and to appoint the town administrator as an ex officio who shall, ex officio non-voting member who shall be entitled to all benefits of membership. Nothing, in addition, nothing in this charge shall prevent or require the Select Board to enforce the membership. It may act in the best interest of the town as applicants come forward. So I, period. Purpose being, two months down the road, somebody resigns, we're not in the same pigeonhole again. Applicants come forward, we don't have to go through this whole process, we can just, who's the best applicant? If it's a civil engineer and we don't have somebody, we can just appoint regardless of what the position is.
Okay. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
All right, in discussion? All right. Motion's on the table. Could I have a vote, please? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Ed. That's a creative solution. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I was about to offer the Select Board not being on it, but I think we need to be on it. So, I think that, that's, that's a given that we need to be on there. So, that will be what we will do then. Thank you very much. Okay. Keeping on with the agenda, COVID-19 update. I think we've heard about the mask lifting. I'm not sure if there's much more to say about things in town, but go ahead. Ed, anything?
The positive case numbers are still dropping. Hospitalizations are dropping, but not as quickly. I will tell you that there is a new variant of Omicron out there. So it supposedly has some different, a little bit different symptoms than previous ones. But, you know, we'll just keep an eye on things and hopefully the numbers still keep dropping.
How are we doing on the test kit distribution?
Yep, it's coming up.
Oh, it's done here.
It's on the agenda, yeah. We'll get to it in a second.
Under COVID, I just, I lost track. Have we closed out the accounting and submitted our final report to whoever, whatever government body we have?
The CARES Act?
No.
Or...
You're correct, I'm sorry.
It'll be the CARES Act, yeah.
I'll ask the question in a minute.
You have the answer already, but yeah, moving on to the next issue, which is the CARES Act update. So, there is a final report due?
There is a final report due at the end of the month, which we will be submitting. We're still going through and making some adjustments to the expenses that we have occurred. But we'll be ready to make that final report.
All right.
Find additional funds to apply to the CARES Act?
Have not found any additional funds to apply to the CARES Act as of yet.
When did we purchase the, when was the first clinic? January, I believe? January, okay.
Yeah, but that was under our, we did that under our...
Oh, I know, I was just wondering if there's anything that made the December 31st deadline under our...
No, I think the last things were, were done, one of the last things was a signage for the fire department.
Sign, right, for fire.
So, I think we're going to find some adjustments to calendar year '21, but fiscal year '22 that weren't accounted for before, so.
Okay, all right.
We'll bring the numbers up.
So just on that, I mean, so if the money had to be spent in calendar year 2021, I believe it had to be...
It had to be sent by December 31st.
Had to be spent, not encumbered, spent.
Correct.
The sign hasn't changed in front of the fire department.
Materials are here, though, right?
Pretty sure we're in 2022.
The materials are, the materials are here.
So is the labor free?
What's that?
Is the labor free?
I believe that the labor was actually going to end up being paid out of a different account, so we should be all set.
So if, if money was authorized out of one account to purchase and develop or build, and now we're going to do the labor out of another account, where's the, where's the authorization to expend those money?
Authorization to expend which money?
Well, we only authorize, as far as I, I could be wrong, but as far as I know, we only authorized the spending of the CARES Act money for the sign, but what I, maybe I misheard, but the labor is actually going to be paid out of a different line item.
Correct.
How, is it a line item? Let me clarify.
It would be a line item that you would not be voting on.
Yeah, the fire department.
Fire department expense.
A fire department grant.
Out of the grant, fire department grant.
Correct.
A grant to build a sign.
I, it's eligible, I can't tell you exactly what, if it was put in for...
I think we put in the email box about $15,000.
For, you know, building a sign, so.
But the installation, I mean, is what you're asking about, is the actual installation of the sign itself. The materials and everything were charged to the CARES Act and bought.
Correct.
Ready to go in when the ground thaws, that they can dig it and put it in, right?
And they can work on it, correct.
Right, but the actual installation is out of some grant?
Some other grant, correct.
That's already been accepted by the town?
Yes.
And this expense has been approved?
Fire Department and Police Department do a lot of their own grant writing and get a lot of small grants for things. So it did, it's not a grant from the grant, through the Grant Committee, but it would be one perhaps that Fire Department had gotten themselves.
Okay, so, just so I understand this. So individual department heads are authorized to apply, accept, and expense grants without notification or acceptance by the Select Board. Correct or incorrect?
Correct.
Correct.
They are.
There is a, in the, in the Grant Committee charge, there was a dollar limit. I believe it was, let's say it was 5,000, that it had to be notified to the Select Board. Anything over 5,000.
Anything over 5,000.
Anything over 5,000.
Anything less than 5,000, if they get the money, they can do whatever they want with no accountability or oversight.
No, it's, well, it's a grant that they, yes, within their own department, it's a grant. They obviously have to work with the accountant, get an accountant set up, et cetera. And most of them are reimbursable grants. So they have to turn in receipts and then get reimbursed for them as they go. Yep. So anything under 5,000, I think that's the way we wrote the charge for the Grant Committee, if I'm not mistaken. And both Ian and John have been good at getting some of their, basically yearly, Randall's gotten a couple as well for recycling, and they're all within that, that lower limit, I believe, for the most part. So, I don't know. Anything else on that? Okay. All right, East Street Bridge update.
Work is continuing on the East Street Bridge. They've done two concrete pores now on, on this side, and they'll continue doing that. The testing company has tested and accepted both of those concrete pores. And I believe it's next week or the following week, they're scheduled to go to Pennsylvania and actually do the inspection of the facility that is supplying the steel for our bridge.
And are we still more or less on track for the summertime? Maybe not June, but in terms of completion?
Well, actually, the completion was extended through, into September.
September.
Yeah, and we're still on track for that.
All right. Rapid test kits, Francine's question, I think.
Yes, thank you.
Where are we with the distribution of the kits? Are we, we definitely are not ordering any more, I believe, right?
No, we are not. We still, we still have some in my office. If you visit, you'll see the boxes. We still owe a combination of 50 to Smith Vocational and Hampshire Regional.
And who's taking care of getting those distributed, then?
No one has actually volunteered to do that as of yet. That's why they're still here. And I think that's the only, I think that's the only distribution that has not been done yet out of that original authorization.
Okay.
I'll bring them over to Smith Vok if it's helpful.
Okay.
Is it the nurse's office or is it through the principal?
I, the Board of Health, never, actually, and, and actually what I can do is, I can actually reach out to Stephanie and see if she's got any recommendations as to who they should be given to at those facilities.
Okay, just let me know, I'm happy to, I'll do both if you want.
You volunteered to do...
I'll do Smith Vok, yeah.
Oh, okay, because I was going to take the other one, Smith, if you were going to do Hampshire Regional.
Either one, I'll take either one of them.
Okay.
All right. Just let, maybe just let Francine out, and we'll take care of it, getting them to those.
Let's get them out there, for sure.
Yeah.
Yep. Friend, for those that may have ordered kits online from the government, I know I got mine yesterday, after about, I think about a five-week turnaround time, but at least it came in the mail. But anyway, we do have, for residents that need them, we do have kits that we've been distributing through the school and Senior Center and per the recommendations of the Board of Health. But hopefully we will use many of them, all of them.
Are there other places that need them, like the businesses in town or something?
Actually, we, the Board of Health never revisited, you know, what that second order might be, if they had any recommendations as where they might go, so.
It might be something to bring up, Francine, I just don't want, don't want it to expire, that's for sure.
Right, no.
They're meeting again on, what did I say here?
Okay, I mean, the businesses obviously see a lot of the public. It might be nice to be able to offer, yeah? Okay, I mean, the businesses obviously see a lot of the public, it might be nice to be able to offer, yeah?
Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk, Ten Strong Road. I was just gonna say, what about the food bank?
We've, they've got, they got, thanks. Yeah, so, okay, well, we'll check in too with Board of Health and just see if they've got further recommendations, because we have a stack of them here. We'd like to be able to distribute, for sure. Okay, next, voiceover IP. How is that coming along with the procurement and installation date ideas?
Yeah, we, I signed the proposal in the form, so everything has been ordered and the process has started. And I still expect that we'll probably have installation sometime between 60 and 90 days from when I signed that form, which, if my memory is correct, was about 10 days ago.
Okay. All right, we'll keep us posted on that one, and that'll be a good change of service to have
Yes, it will.
better communication within Town Hall and the phone system. All right. Okay, appointments and resignations, so here we are, and we have three on our list. All four, then, the Public Safety Building Committee.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for all three of them, then. Barbara Semborski, the Finance Committee Representative, Public Safety Building Committee, term to expire. Do we wanna propose staggering dates here? Ed, it wasn't on the?
Yeah, I would, I would probably say probably 1, 3, and 2, maybe.
Okay, so term to expire then would be, are we just gonna do end of fiscal?
It would be June.
June 2023 for Barbara?
Actually, it would be 2022.
2022. Oh, it would be now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Already?
Okay. And then Mark Darnold, Public Safety Building Committee, Ed.
24, June 30th, 2024.
Yep, his background, we have the, we have a CV of Barbara with her background in finance, and she's a current Finance Committee Representative, Mark Darnold. He is somebody that has environmental engineering, reached a professional engineer, 35 years' experience as a civil engineer, and has been involved in design of several public safety complexes. His term would expire in 2023. I thought Ed said we'd do 1, 3, 2.
Yeah.
With Mark being the third, the three-year one, so he would, his would expire in 24. Okay.
24, yeah.
Keep the end of year longer.
And then what would be the one?
First one you did?
Yeah.
Barbara.
Barbara Semborski.
Why would it be 2022 as opposed to 3?
Because we still have a partial year, so it would be 2022.
Okay. And then Don Warren is the Historical Commission Representative, has been a member of the Committee, Public Safety Building Committee, term to expire 2023.
Correct.
All right, I'll second that. And, yeah. He also has a degree in mechanical engineering and MBA, current member of the original Public Safety Building Committee and a historical representative.
Okay. All right, so we have three, three nominations, Barbara Semborski, Mark Darnold, and Don Warren. And we have a motion, yes, and we have a second?
I second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, okay. I think we have a full building committee at this point in time. All right, next, oh dear, I mustn't be, and Ed, you're gonna have to help me with this, the ARPA survey results. Let me see if this works now. Okay, let's see, can I just hit this again? I don't wanna do that, go ahead. Go ahead, I minimized it, so it's down here.
Okay, why did I go back to that full screen?
It may still be there, just pop up my, I didn't, all I did was hit that and see if it comes up more. Yep.
There we go.
Nope, not there, though.
Not there, okay.
Okay.
So, let's try, let me get back to that, it's in full screen.
Screen.
Entire screen. I think, or was it Microsoft Edge tab?
Okay.
There you go.
Ooh, scary thought, okay. All right, guys, well, you have in your packages, actually, you've got a couple versions, only because I asked for it to be double-sided, so part of it was gonna be a standalone document and part of it got copied to another document. So anyway, the colored one is much, much prettier to understand, maybe? Maybe not. So let me just say that this has been a work in progress. I've been working a bit with Megan from, who's on the check committee, but also she's the person that's been helping out with the computer IT work with the Senior Center. And we've spent a, sorry? Okay, yep. We've spent a fair amount of time trying to look at results and troubleshooting things that, that were happening. So here we have, if you recall, the survey itself was open for about five weeks, and that got us a total of 716 responses, which I think is pretty good. 634 of those were online and 82 were hard copy, so part of our work was to enter in all the hard copies, and that took a bit of time to enter in everybody's answers into the system. But this, then, I'll just scroll down a little bit, so this shows that the bulk of people live in Southampton but work elsewhere. Out of this crew, a fair number live and work in Southampton, and then about, almost a similar number retired and live in Southampton. The business in Southampton, theoretically 12 there, but I'm, I'm a little sceptical, skeptical of how that translated throughout the survey, and I'll get to that when I come to another question. But this is a pretty good mixture of people, I think. I was pretty, pretty happy with the number of returns. And given that the, the youngest age group that the survey was able to apply to, in a way, was the 18-year-olds, and per our 2020 census, apparently we have around 2,550 people in town that are over the age of 18. So maybe you could extrapolate and say that's about a 14% percentage of people that were possible to take it, that did take it. So we'll see how that varies through. But anyway, it's a good, good response, I think in general. I'm very pleased with that. People in town, as usual, on any of these surveys, people, some people skip the questions, some people forget, some people don't read the directions clearly, and so a lot of these things that were skipped were ones that were actually on paper as well. Some of the, the rules within the online survey made them answer certain questions or skip to a next one and didn't apply. So this one, in terms of people living in town, what's very interesting here, I think, is that the majority of people, almost half the people, have been here more than 20 years. So that, and then the grouping of the 11 to 20 years, another 154 people, one would assume that that means that these are people that would be generally familiar with some of the issues that town has been facing over time, I would hope. Age-wise, we had a pretty good, pretty good mixture here. The highest grouping ended up being the 35 to 44-year-olds. They had about a 25% out of the entire number of people that responded, that was the grouping there. And then the next grouping were the 65 to 74-year-olds, at about 20%, and then followed up again by the 45 to 54-year-olds. So again, a pretty, pretty, pretty good spread, I guess I would say, across the age groups. In the upper ages, we actually did have 11 in the 85 to 94, and then three at, at 95 and more that answered, and 18 to 24-year-olds, 15. So again, a fairly broad range of people that, that responded. And a lot of these, I will go back and do a count because someone asked me to, but the number of those that did manual, out of the 82 manual ones, a large number of those were, were seniors. There were a few outliers, but most were seniors, and that just proves that. And when we do surveys like this, we do need to not just assume that everybody will do them online. We need to make accommodations for paper surveys. So this was the first question in terms of where should the town invest its money? And these were the ones that were the basic categories that ARPA instructions had given us early on in terms of, sorry, the, the broad categories of where money could be spent. And this is what it came out to, to be with broadband topping the list. And this was really at about 50%. Second to that was premium pay. And thirdly, small business development and recovery. And I'm not sure, that could be one where I'm not sure, maybe the question might not have been clear in terms of what people were expecting. I'm not clear if that, if people thought that that meant that we were going to do something to attract more businesses to town. That wasn't exactly the, the intent of the question. It was more to help small businesses that had problems in town. But this is how that all came out, and then with what we were talking about tonight, whether it's water infrastructure or sewer infrastructure, they were almost the same at around 27%. And then Senior Center as well, always, sorry, direct assistance, direct assistance to households for food or rent or mortgage or other kind of expenses, okay? So that's, I think, rings kind of loud and clear that the highest priority for folks seemed to be broadband, and the second top priority was premium pay. Okay. Next question was if we could do something, which we weren't sure at the time what ARPA would allow us to do, and we still may have some things here, but again, on these two questions, everybody except two people answered the question, so that gets us quite a, quite a valid number of people, I think, that, you know, felt strongly about this. Public safety complex, public safety facilities came in as a top priority. Improve Conant Park, improve or expand Conant Park and other, other areas, other nature trail areas came in number two. Direct assistance to children and families for technical, or technology education and/or equipment came in as a third priority. Heating and ventilation for systems, improvements at Town Hall Buildings, or in Town Buildings, came in after that. Community solar energy initiatives and Senior Center development. So those are the, the ways that those all fell out. And I won't go into the whole scoring, but this is something that the survey monkey does, and it's a, it's a weighted, it's a weighted average based on the number of responses. It's a magical formula that they have, which they have explained to me, which is one of those where I'm kind of sorry I asked to know the detail, frankly, because it was way too much information, but.
Rank ordered?
It's, it's rank ordered, but, but then it's, it's also a weighted, a weighted average, so in terms of how many people answered a certain, certain question. But obviously, the, if you look at even the top two, you know, the first, those that had it first and second place, public safety comes in there at about 65%. If you just add the two percentages, around 37% for Conant Park as the next one up. So those became pretty high priorities for what people were thinking about, anyway. Okay. Number six, has the pandemic had a positive or negative economic impact on your household? A lot of people said it didn't have any impact. There's a few that did say positive impact. They were not asked to tell us why or what was positive. One could assume that maybe it was something like, well, because I was more confined to home, I didn't go out, I didn't spend as much, I didn't go out to eat as much, maybe I saved a little bit of money, that might have been an answer, but we didn't ask for that to be spelled out. We did ask for the negative responses, and I'll show you that in a minute. So out of these, people had a choice, so if they did say no impact or positive, then they skipped on to the question after, two questions down the line. Those that responded negative, which were 252 here, and this is 252 responses, said that they'd had a negative, negative impact on their household economically. And what their preferences were, were along the lines of direct cash assistance, utility, rental or mortgage, and internet, and interestingly enough, rental and mortgage assistance and internet access were just about equal. Then food assistance, mental health services, unemployment benefits, emergency childcare, on down to counseling services, job training, and substance abuse treatment. And those percentage-wise are on another page here, but you can see this. So direct cash assistance, around 47%. Utility assistance, 35. Rental or mortgage assistance, 67 responses there, and 29%. Now, interestingly, if you remember during the CARES Act time, we had provided some $6,000 available to the Housing Authority to help people with rental or mortgage assistance, but there were so many other programs out there that that never did get utilized, and we ended up reallocating those funds, but it still showed up here as some, some level of importance for a number of people. Now, the one thing that I think is, you know, a couple things that I found interesting here, just that when you say direct cash assistance, keep in mind, this was an anonymous survey, so we have absolutely no idea if we wanted to do something with direct cash assistance. We have absolutely no idea who or how we could get this to. I mean, there's just no, no way to know that, because everything was anonymous. So just to show you, that turned out to be a priority, but internet access still comes in there as a high priority, in the top four, anyway.
Also, I think it's important to note that there's no dates on any, I just realized, there's no dates on any of these questions. It's very broad, so from, has the COVID-19 pandemic had a positive or negative economic impact on your household? Are we talking about May 2020? Or are we talking about January 2022? I, you, I don't know, when I was answering these questions, I was thinking currently, but what were people also thinking, you know, at the very beginning of the pandemic or the first six months of the pandemic?
I, well, I think we were thinking of it just economically more in general, how, how has it affected you? Yeah, we didn't put any dates on.
I mean, 'cause it has been now two years, so. I'm just, because like, emergency childcare services, that would have been great the first six months, but now that's not something that families may not necessarily need right now, so I'm just like, keeping that in the back of my mind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So this is a question that I am disappointed with, and I need to do a little bit more digging on, perhaps, with, with Megan. If you're an employer in Southampton, which of the statement best describes your current employee situation? So not applicable, great, that's a lot of them. But then there were people that did put, I'm understaffed and having, let me just get the question so I don't see this. Understaffed and have difficulty finding and retaining employees, or then fully staffed, no difficulties finding employees, fully staffed but have had difficulties. So we've got a disconnect here somewhere. There were 13 others. None of them provided any detail as to what they felt for an impact. And then because on that first question, number one, it said that there were 12 that were business owners in Southampton, this doesn't connect. It does not compute, obviously math-wise. And I, I will go back and do some more digging on it, but they were supposed to answer only one choice. It could be that people just chose more than one answer. So people sometimes don't, don't follow the instructions, and they might have chosen a second answer. But I, I need to see if I can see any correlation with that business question that was alluded to.
It might be possible that, I mean, while if you read that question, I think it's pretty clear that you have to be the business owner in order to answer it, but they may have seen themselves as the business manager, supervisor, hiring person, and therefore answer in that capacity.
Yeah, exactly, that's possible. Or it could be that, you know, they, they actually own a business, but not in Southampton. They could be a business owner in Hoyoke or Westfield or something, you know, and so it, it's, it doesn't really help us get any further, but we also didn't dig any further with our questions to, you know, figure out, you know, what kind of help a business might need. So that one is probably not the greatest question that we could have asked, perhaps, but. Do you have school-age kids in your household? We had quite a few that said no, but we have 292 that said yes. So out of those 292, we asked them to basically tell us what grade. So there's 292 parents, trying to keep parents and children separate in terms of what these answers are showing us. So basically, 282 parents were involved, I believe. And then the number of kids, they showed us where they are in the, in the distribution here. So the majority were from Norris, around 285 from Norris, and about 130 out of Hampshire Regional. So the column on the right represents kids, not, not number of respondees or parents, okay? Going on down, then, they had Going on down then, they had the choice for those that were parents of kids, parents or guardians of kids at Norris. What would be something that they felt would help their student? And the biggest answer here became the behavioral specialist to assist students. Second answer was almost similar. The full-time reading interventionists and dedicated summer school sessions were basically in tie. And then other, there are some comments, I'll show you in a minute. 13%, 31 people basically said not applicable. And one could interpret that they didn't feel that there was anything special that their child needed, that their student was doing fairly well. And maybe didn't have anything to say that applied here. Math interventionist was the last one on the list there. And so out of these people here, these were the kinds of comments. And I'll just sort of scroll through a few of these. There were, sorry, how many were there? I saw that right above, sorry, just a second. 16, no, sorry. Not applicable, no, 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 no. Other, 32 comments, sorry. So 32 people wrote something. So it's a variety of things, keeping the kids in school, more after-school activities, no masks, restoring cuts from the last budget. They appeared to have some thoughts about select board and some of our interests on select board. But anyway, people are free to say what they'd like. Behavioral specialist came up, librarian, after-school programs, improvements in structure and facilities, program for gifted advanced students, full-time music teacher. So a wide variety, but people did put a few responses in the list here, which was kind of good to see that people took time to do that. Another one about restoring cuts, which we actually did do. Overall, funds to provide students, per pupil spending is way too low. More teachers in the classroom, special ed teachers if needed. So basically, that's where we are. So students, parents that answered this. So parents that had students at Norris also were able to see the question about Hampshire Regional, right? Because some parents could have a kiddo in fourth to sixth grade, and then somebody could have a ninth to 12th grade. So those that were parents of students at Norris could answer both of these questions, okay? And so those though that only had students from seventh to ninth grade skipped that question and went on to, or were supposed to skip that question and go on to Hampshire Regional. And that became a little bit of a conundrum for people, because I think people just went on ahead. And those that, on paper anyway, those that were answering it just kept on answering and didn't realize that they were supposed to. Even though the instructions were clear to exit after the Norris question, if it didn't apply to you. We found in our cross-referencing that out of this grouping, there were 36 parents that should not have answered the intervention here because they did not have kids at Hampshire Regional. When they answered, going back on their individual survey, you can go in and see the individual survey responses. There were 36 parents that had kids in, say, four through six or K through three, but nonetheless, they put in their comments and they shouldn't have. So actually, this is inflated by 36 answers. But nonetheless, and I did do a cutout on that, which I can show you later. But the overall responses still came up, even by subtracting the surveys that shouldn't have responded in here. The order of priority was still the same. So the adjustment counselor was still the top priority. And then a tier-two intervention teacher was second priority. And then the reading specialist, the last priority. And then these were some of the comments on this part, including hotspots at the town library, variety of things. Increasing social functions, interesting one here, number six, outdoor team building exercise. I thought that was a very different kind of response. Pay increase to encourage more substitute teachers. There were a couple that said that they had Smith-Vogue, so this did not go to Smith-Vogue kids. So they might have had kids in, at Norris, but then they had somebody at Smith rather than Hampshire Regional. And then that's it. So basically, that's what that looked like. Let me just see if I can pull up one other here without losing that. I bet I just didn't do that right. See if I can pull up one more here if I can. So we did do a filter on the, tried to do a little bit of a filter on the Norris one. Let's see if this will come up. Yeah, okay. So in the, those out of here, there were 234. So this is looking at just the last couple of school questions through the eyes of a Norris school parent. So out of this, again, this came up with this preponderance of pre-K through fourth grade. And then the choices still came out to be the behavioral specialist and full-time interventionist and dedicated school session. So this just shows this directly through a parent from Norris's eyes. And that validates that. And let's see, what else? And these would be parents that also had kids at Hampshire Regional. And so this was again showing the adjustment counselor, tier-two, and reading specialist. So that's kind of what that looked like. I did do a little bit more filtering with what we could play around with here. Again, Megan helped out a huge amount, and I would not have been able to do all of these things yourself, myself, without her help. I think H, let's see, HRHS, let's see if I can pull this one up. Same thing here, so there were 116 parents from, that had kids at the regional. And they basically, most of those were ninth to 12th grade. And then that's where that priority still came up. So they, the adjustment counselor came up really high at the school. Okay? Did do a little bit of curiosity here with just putting in a different filter for adults age 25 to 44. And just tried to look at their responses through that age group, just to see if there was anything in particular. And so this shows the age group only 25 to 44 and what they reflected as their priorities. And I think this seems to correlate fairly well. So most of these were people that live in Southampton but work elsewhere. That seemed to make sense for that age group. No retirees in that age group, so that was a good sign. Most of these are people that have lived in town on those, a little bit on the shorter end, less than five years, 25%, 31% for six to 10 years. And again, this is the 25 to 44 age group. Most of these were 35 to 44-year-olds. So again, this was, if you remember on the age group, that was the highest age group that answered the survey. Their priorities came out to be broadband, premium pay, and supporting small businesses. Other public safety programs came out next. So again, these are all pretty much tracking with their priorities. Public safety, Conant Park came in on the second end of things for them. And just one last one, I'll show you real quick. I tried to do another cut, slice the pie with seniors. And this would have been seniors, I believe, did 54 to 75, I think it was. And here we had, or I'll have to see that on the age slide when I get there. These are mostly retirees on this one, 156 of this whole pool, looking through their eyes, 202 altogether on that bunch. Most of them have lived in town more than 20 years. So again, a lot of that makes sense. Age group, so this is, sorry, this is the 65 to 85-year-olds. Majority of these in the 65 to 74 range answered this. Or this is just slicing the pie to look at it through their ideas and their priorities. Their priorities too, interestingly enough, came up, top priorities came up broadband, premium pay, and small business on that one. But then when we got to, if we could do something, what would it be? Their priority changed a little bit. Public safety was still number one, but senior center became number two. So that makes a whole lot of sense for that age group. So that's just showing you a little bit of what can be done. There's probably more that should be done to do some deeper dives. But it's kind of what we've got. I think Megan and I might try and do a little bit more, if you would like some further analysis. But we'll try to write up, or I will try to write up some sort of narrative to go with this so that it's a little bit more written and explainable. But any questions or thoughts on this process? What does anybody think about having gone through this whole craziness? I'd appreciate any feedback.
I would just say, I'd like to, I'm sure on behalf of others too, thank you for all your work on this, Chris. Putting this together, getting the survey out there, and then spending the time on the results.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, no, thanks. And like I say, Megan was a great help. And at some point, I would like to figure out if there was a way to help compensate her a little bit for some of her hours that she spent doing that. But we'll worry about that as we go forward with ARPA.
I just want to mention, it sounds, from the couple of the, the school committee meetings and what we hear from the school principal. Some of the priorities that the parents have in terms of other services that students need line up fairly well with her comments at meetings. So it's, everybody's recognizing the same set of issues, which is good.
Seemed to, yeah. No, I was pleased to see that as well. It did seem to follow pretty well with that, yeah.
Really? Yeah, so I think that, you know, most of us that have been on the select board for a while continue to get complaints about Charter and/or Spectrum. And we see a map, and the map says that it's widely covered the town. We find out that the survey at the school says most kids are able to get internet service, and yet it comes out as number one. And I'm just wondering, what can we do? We've asked, I think Charter to come to a meeting. We need to figure out how to respond to that survey. And how do we help people that need the help? And it came up again this morning at the friends meeting about the lack of Charter in this building. They can't watch 191 in the seniors in this building. So anyway, I just, I don't have a solution. I'm just asking, like, how do we get to the bottom of this?
There's 191 right there. We just said they can't watch 191 anywhere in this building.
No, no, we're saying in the senior center, they couldn't. And we'd like to have some programs recorded. If people don't have cable service at home, educational programs that people can come and view here or here. So the question was really over there. That we know that the only place things can be recorded in this building, well, upstairs and here. But this is the only place it can be live broadcast.
Correct.
Yeah, it is.
And that's an issue for people.
And I know they have the cameras, so if you want to record something in the COA, you can get the cameras from East Hampton Media and record it.
Yeah.
And play it back.
But if there were a program on some channel to play for people attending a meeting at the COA, they would have to come in here to see it. If it was programmed at that time, which it wouldn't be, because that's, East Hampton Media has their own particular timeframe, right? So unless, maybe if we got, the TV's a mobile thing, if that were a possibility, that could move around if it needed to?
I can see what we can do to get 191 to play in the COA.
Yeah, okay, so I thought. So that's one possibility?
I would just say on the internet access, I guess I'm the opposite. I mean, I'm all for having Charter come in or Spectrum come in. I'm all for them having to justify the signal links, the uploads, the downloads, whatever those are. But I'm not hearing the same complaints. And I'm sure I'm opening my email account to be flooded with complaints now. But the only thing I'm hearing people complain about is the cost associated with it. It's not the signal. But I haven't spoke, I'm just saying, are we asking the right question?
It's maybe varied over time, I'm not sure.
The two most common comments as far as, and it depends, because the two get mixed together of whether it's internet or TV, but they are supplied by cable companies in general, is the cost, number one. I can't believe what I pay on a monthly basis for what I get. And then number two is the amount of changes you get in, whether it's a one-month, two-month, or, you know, six-month period from channels being dropped, added, what have you.
We talked about having the Charter person come in, but I guess we don't, unless we've got some specific questions to ask from ourselves and/or the public. I'm not sure that it's a useful amount of time. I mean, they could talk and tell us what they do, but I'm not sure.
Is there an existing contract in place for the town?
There is.
Yes. And what's the expiration date?
Five years from today.
I think it's another five years.
From today?
Wow. From this year, we're halfway through a 10-year contract.
The 10-year.
I guess the question is delayed for three years.
So that's that. And one of the things that I think I mentioned that the tech committee has been looking at is the possibility of figuring out whether it would make sense to be on our own with our own municipal-like plant idea. And they've met with two different groups to take a look at that. So that may be something coming down the line in terms of what they think about it, in terms of recommendations to us. But for the short term at least, we are bound to Charter. And I don't know how we, I don't know what would be useful to have them come in. And I mean, I'm not sure what they would tell us, that people would feel comfortable knowing that it's true. In terms of, you know, somebody will say, well, my service is, you know, lousy. It buffers all the time on Crooked Lead Road, for example. But, or I can't reach it on Manhan Road, or whatever it may be. I don't know. I mean, we had the map, but that didn't really tell us much in terms of their coverage. Theoretically, they cover the town, right?
I guess more importantly than having them tell us, I think maybe if we had some spokespersons from people in town who have the issues of both cost and quality, to kind of represent the concerns of the customers and see if there's any, what kind of response we would get to that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
But basically, this building has internet service. Nowhere in the building does it have a television cable subscription. So no, none of us can watch whether it's 191 or, you know, channel 845 or whatever it is that Charter Spectrum offers.
Right. Okay.
Staying on the survey, but getting off of broadband for a minute. Can we expedite when we're going to have our state leadership come in? Our rep and our senator? I think one of the things, while it wasn't necessarily, well, it was pretty much number one across the board up there, it's public infrastructure. Whether it's the public safety complex, the council aging, you know, whatever the case may be, even sewer systems, it's infrastructure. And yes, we have the ARPA money, but the state has a whole bigger pot of money out there that they're trying to debate what to do with. And it might be timely for us to be the squeaky wheel.
And we haven't also received any notification, have we, about the federal infrastructure bill?
No.
Nothing at all yet, which will be coming via the state too. But yeah, we talked about, I think we just have been a little bit jammed up with our presentations and schedules to figure out when to fit them in. But let's, maybe if we can both reach out to, or reach out to both John and Kelly and see what their time schedule is. I know, I see notes of John going around to various communities, doing all sorts of things from, you know, the ice plunge in the lake to calling bingo. So he's more than willing, I think, to come out and about.
And even if we can figure out our, we know what our rotation is, and I realize it'll be after the election, so whatever. But, you know, pick the May and June dates that the select board's supposed to meet and give it to them so they can block out their schedules ahead of time.
Yeah, let them block it out ahead of time. Okay, we'll talk about that.
I think it'd be good to have Charter come and also invite anybody from the public to come.
Can certainly do that. I think we may have to wait till toward the end of the month or early April probably on that one. But make it, I mean, we'd have to let people know that this is what we're doing. And, you know, if people have some issues, they should come. I mean, I don't want the person to be totally blindsided either, though. I mean, I think they should submit their questions ahead of time to Ed or somebody, I mean, to Judy, whatever. I mean, to have it in writing somewhere so we know. You know, I think that would not be fair to have somebody come in and just sort of get slammed by.
But when we ask people, what should we do with ARPA funds? And the number one thing is broadband in the community. I mean, we've been hearing problems with broadband on Facebook and everything. I mean, we've been hearing problems with broadband on Facebook and everywhere else for a very long time.
Right. Well, and like we say, I don't know lately whether it's more cost than it is service. I don't know which is the highest, you know, the highest nuisance for people right now.
Right.
So let's, we will keep that around on the agenda and Ed and I'll figure out a time whether that makes time we can fit it in when we're not terribly jammed up, okay, for scheduling. All right, so if no further thoughts about the survey, I mean, I will try to do a little bit of a write-up for that, but then shall we move on to the ARPA funds application discussion? Which, Rini, you took the lead on this with Ed to take a look at a possible application. You want to talk us through that a little bit?
I took the survey, I mean, I took the applications that we were given last time and I reviewed all of them and I included points for all of them. So I just created a draft of a survey that actually can be done online. It's a form fill. I'm kind of getting to it, hang on. And I used some of the language that you had in the beginning of your survey that you had done, just to let people know what the four categories of the ARPA funds is. And then this survey starts on the second page and it basically asks which category of the funding and which department, business organization or committee described the project, what population's going to benefit from the project, what's the total amount of ARPA funds requested, other additional sources of funds for the project, date it's requested, is the project completion timeline consistent with the ARPA, which is the end of December 2024? If this isn't funded, will there be a request in capital or operating budget for these items? Will there be recurring costs as a result of the project? If so, please clarify. And then additional information, then just some certifications certify that you are the authority representing the organization, that if you, what, that you agree to use the funds the way they're stated, and that there should be a project wrap-up report of some kind in completion of the project.
Yep.
And then it just has administrator designees, you know, when received and that. So I just basically took, Lincoln was probably the main one that everybody agreed was a little bit more concise, so mostly I used what they had put.
And I guess just one question from my end. With the final rule, Ed, these four main categories still stand out there, right? Even though the final rule has expanded possibilities for how we can use it, those four?
Those are the four main categories.
Yeah, I did actually.
Those still do apply.
I did actually use this.
Okay, great, yeah, okay. No, I wasn't sure now, I was trying to remember if the final rule made any additions to that or not, but, okay.
Could I just suggest that we add some language that maybe funds have to be expended or encumbered, I would say, six months before the end of the project so that we don't end up the way we did with CARES at the last minute, finding that we have money and then not having sufficient time to spend it all, to repurpose it. So I would, I would kind of target that just to give us some leeway to make sure that we are able to use all the funds.
Okay. So that might tie in somewhat. You've got a question, is project completion timeline consistent with the ARPA timeline, which is?
I'm saying move it up to six months prior.
I see. So instead of, okay.
Or it can be added on the first page somewhere.
Yeah.
Just so they don't, if they don't spend it, then it's going to be looked at and repurposed.
Right. Yeah, that might be better more in the introduction and we might not need all of that stuff in the introduction. We could maybe chop some of that out of there, I don't know. But, yeah, I think it would be good to have that written down somewhere. That's not a bad idea.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea and I, you know, having everything due at the same time so that you could make decisions knowing everything that's out there, I think that's good.
Okay. Any thoughts, questions? John, anybody?
Yep. On the first page there, one is just a grammatical. It's, you got to flip the words around somehow under how ARPA, how, it says how ARPA can funds be spent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
How can ARPA funds be spent?
Good catch.
Yep.
And then just on the second paragraph there, I'm not sure what the wording would be, but that's where the town of Southampton received approximately 1.8 million. All funds need to be expended or obligated. Submissions must be submitted on this application and are due by X date. So I understand the intent of that, but I would suggest that it almost be like, you know, once we approve this, this is rolling acceptance. First come, first served. What I wouldn't want to have happen, and maybe we can address this by just what we pick for the X date, I don't want to leave this open for six months and wait six months to say, okay, well now we're going to decide what we're going to do. If the X date is 60 days from whenever we vote on it, I'm okay. But if we want to leave it open because maybe we don't get enough applications that, I mean, I'm sure we're going to get 100, 1.8 million.
Yep. No, one thought that I'll throw out, that I've seen, I think, other towns or, in terms of their write-up, what they've done is actually take it and divide the pot of money that they're due to get or have already gotten, combination thereof, and say, okay, we're going to do, you know, X amount of dollars, this is our first round, our second round, and maybe a third round at the most. And that would get us, you know, 600,000, for example, for a first round with a deadline. Second round is going to be from date to date. Third round is, I mean, you can't make it out too far because you need that two years to implement, right? So it's all going to be applied for within the coming six months, most likely, I would think, I don't know. Yeah, in order to get through the year, yeah. So that would be a thought anyway, is to do it that way so that we can have, you know, a deadline for each round and we could, you know, do it that way, maybe it's an idea, but...
And if we're going to have multiple rounds, are we going to say that nothing prohibit, if you're awarded in round one, it doesn't prohibit you from applying in round two or three?
I don't know. Good question.
Would not be silent?
Yeah, that would be, that would be a conundrum. I mean, I guess, I don't know. Well, again, grant programs that I've dealt with would be that you wait your turn so that anybody else that hasn't had a chance comes first. If you have a valid idea and we still have money in that round, you could be eligible again, but at most, you know, two out of the three times, are you eligible or something like that? I don't know, we'd have to make up a rule that, how we'd like to manage it, I guess, would be an idea. But anybody have any thoughts on that? I don't know. Joy, anybody?
I don't, no, I just want to make sure that we do put that date in.
Yeah.
Whether it's within the next couple of months.
Right, yeah. No, I think, you know, to the extent that we're, you know, I mean, you've seen the overall results of the survey. I mean, if we wanted to dig deeper into it, we could, but I think this gives you the general, the general notion. I mean, I don't know that there's any real reason to wait too long to...
If we are doing rounds though, for a certain amount of money, should we be putting in that amount of money that we're doing that round for so people know?
We could. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's possible, sure. I mean, that would just be an idea and whether it's two rounds or three rounds, I mean, I don't know.
Because you don't want people applying for $1 million projects and that there's not enough funds to fund something like that.
Right. I don't know. Ed, what, have you dealt with these kinds of, I mean, situations before in terms of how this might work out the best manage-wise, management-wise? I mean, again, I think we'd want to set a deadline and be sure that we've got a pool of applications to look at all in one go and, you know, see what we got, right?
Well, I like the phased thought more than the rolling application thought. However, I'm just going to say this and throw it out there, is if you, you know, said we're going to do three rounds and split it up into $600,000 a round, I'll say this board has talked about some projects that can take all 1.8 million dollars in one shot. Do you want to preclude anything like that by, once again, limiting that round to a certain amount of dollars?
Well, or you could, you could kind of spread it out where, you know, you've got, whatever, 500,000 for a first round, a second round is a little bit bigger, and third round is still a little bit more. I mean, you could do it any way you wanted to split the pie, but, or maybe it's just two rounds, maybe it's easier in two rounds.
Or maybe it's one round that says if there are any funds left available and have not been allocated after this, there may be a second round.
Putting the caveat that the select board reserves the right to award it all in one or extend it. I mean, it's hard to set parameters for an unknown because you don't know what's coming through.
You don't know what's coming at you.
I think it's pretty clear what some of the intentions are going to be, based on what's already come to us or what rumor mill out there in the community says is coming, until it actually shows up.
Right.
But then, the other option is just declare it loss in revenue and you pull it all in, get a certified dollars free cash and then spend it any way you want the following year.
Right.
So...
I mean, unless we, unless we know of some awards that we think would be eligible and want to do something for nonprofits, which wouldn't fit into that category, I'm still of a big mindset that would be very much in favor for taking most, if not all, in loss of revenue.
Well, looking at the final rule again, if we did that and it's allowable that we can do that, I mean, for all small towns, apparently it's possible, the option, the other option is to do this crazy formula of how you would have to allocate funds, how you could do that. And it's a very, looks to me, in just reading it, very time-consuming and management painful compared to just taking the easier option, given that that's been allowed, to take that loss of funds, revenue, loss of revenue.
Like I say, the biggest thing is you eliminate the ability to do anything for a nonprofit.
Right.
You know, so I mean, and yes, we're not going to be able to take 10 million, but if we're going to get 1.8, I mean, the board could say, okay, we're going to take 1.7 million dollars, or fill in the blank, as loss of revenue and we're going to reserve, you know, $100,000 or whatever it is to help, be able to help in the nonprofit area.
You could actually split it like that.
Right. I mean, actually, many of the larger communities that are getting more, and they're forced to do it, but they've basically taken the 10 million as loss of revenue and whatever, you know, if it's another 15 or 20 million over that, that's basically getting accounted for and going into the formula.
Can I ask a question? So I know we're capped at 1.8 million, that that's what we're getting, but under the rule, you can take loss of revenue, 10 million and below, right? So in theory, just for discussion, you could take the 1.8 million, minus the vaccines and that that we've already approved.
Correct.
So what is to prevent us from doing that? So we do that. A, what are we then mandated to do with the money? And is it open-ended enough where you just appropriate it, never actually spend it? It gets closed out to free cash, comes in the next year, and hypothetically, we take, I'm not suggesting this, we take the money and we pay off our pension obligations and therefore eliminate that entire debt, ease the burden for the taxpayers currently of Southampton going forward. What prevents us from doing that?
From what I read, hypothetically, nothing.
Right. Versus trying to find a one-time project to spend this money on, we potentially could solve a long-term issue that would benefit, benefit every existing and future taxpayer in this town.
And I will, I will turn it around and get into the economic development piece and saying, if you take that 1.8 million dollars and invest it into the right areas of infrastructure, guess what? You're going to add so much value to this town and yes, guess what? Home values are going to go up, property values are going to go up, and basically what we can recoup in taxes is going to go up.
Right. And I wouldn't disagree with you. I would just ask, who's bringing that plan forward? Because I don't see it as one of the possible four options here.
I think it's a really interesting strategy, for sure. I just wonder about the ethics of sending out a survey to people in town, asking for their opinion and then not taking any of their suggestions. Even though I know it rests within the select board, I'm just saying.
Well, yeah, and I'm not suggesting not take their suggestions, but it's an anonymous survey, less than 20% of the population responded. We don't know whether or not there were, the same person responded 15 times or one time. Actually, you know what? I don't know because I didn't see behind the scenes. Did you see username and logins?
No, you didn't. You know, you see IP addresses, you see IP addresses.
Yeah.
So you can see similar IP addresses.
Were there multiple IP addresses?
I mean, the same IP address? No.
But also, it wasn't an option on the survey, except for direct cash assistance.
Direct cash assistance, and again, we don't...
Which, which, wouldn't want to argue that a direct cash assistance is alleviating the burden of the taxpayers.
Taxpayer, yep.
And that's one way to hit the entire community at once.
Or is direct cash assistance, divide the 1.8 million dollars into the number of households in Southampton and send, and divide it up and send each one a check for that amount of money.
$292.
Yeah, would that be as long of an effect though?
Right.
Yeah, right. So, all right, so where are we before we?
Well, I'm editing this survey. Editing the application and I have so far have...
Thank you for doing that, Rini.
How ARPA funds can be spent, I switched that wording around. And then I heard two suggestions. One is, has to do with having people plan six months before the end of expending the funds. And the other suggestion was either sequential or cyclic applications and I don't think we came to a...
So on that, is anybody opposed to whenever we open the applications, that we agree to leave them open for a minimum of 30 days and then from that point forward, it could be rolling? And/or do multiple phases? Because I do think that once we open, there should be a window for apps to come in, but it shouldn't be until 1.8 million worth of apps to come in.
Shouldn't be forever and ever, yeah. And I guess I'm not, yeah, I'd like some level of closing, but, yeah.
What was your experience with the CARES Act fund? That was basically two pots of money. The first one was a little bumpy and the second one was much more methodical, but do you see the advantage of having a round one, round two?
I think so, because otherwise, I think, you know, if you, if you just let it be, maybe I'm not totally understanding, but just sort of be wide open, then you're going to, you know, we're going to be, I don't want to fall into the same trap like we did with our, with CARES, but also even just, you know, not leaving an opening on the Public Safety Committee, for example. We had something good that came in at the last minute. So I don't want to be able to, I want to be able to have some level of parameter so that if there's a great idea that comes in in round two, that we still have the possibility of doing that. And I don't know how we would do that if we just leave it all open and, we set a timeframe for the first 30 days for applications, but...
Here's my recommendation.
Then what?
Plan on doing two rounds. And you could put the caveat in there that round two will happen if there's money's available. I would do a 60-day opening because some of these projects are going to take longer to actually put together the documentation and whatever than others. And like I say, do the 60 days, see what comes in in round two, go through those, award them and maybe do another round, it might be 90 days after that. But I'm also going to actually take something from the state here and say, you know what? We should also require anyone that is receiving these funds to do a quarterly project report back to us. So we can actually monitor what's being spent on a timely basis.
Yeah, no, that would be a good idea.
And in terms of submissions to accounting of all their expenditures in a timely way, again, so we don't get to the end and then find out somebody has, not that would overspend, but underspend.
I mean, I guess, I don't know. My first thought, 60 days seems like a long time for an application process, given, I mean, so, okay, Hampden Pond's one, but we know this already, the 12,000, but there may be some others that are more complicated, I hear you. But I guess the level of detail we're asking for in the application, I wouldn't think that they would have to have, I'm not sure what you're thinking about in terms of a potential project, but something that would be so incredibly technically detailed that it would take long to prepare. We're not the technical experts, we're just looking at, at the concept of what they want to do and is it feasible to do, right? I mean, 60 days just feels like, I mean, here we are, March, so suppose, you know, in the next couple of weeks, we decide that we want to do this... of weeks, we decide that we want to do this, you know, we're already into mid-May, which is after town elections, town meeting. I don't know. 30 days sounded good to me, but 60 maybe, I don't know.
I think you're going to see two totally opposite ends of the spectrum, and I'm just going to use the bigger project.
Yeah.
I'm going to say, okay, water department submits for that 10% of the 2,700 feet, or whatever it is of the water main.
Yep.
That's out here. They've pretty much surveyed and have a good, decent percentage of a design done, so they're pretty much ready to go. If you're looking for a broadband proposal or whatever, guess what? You're starting from square one, and I don't think, in fact, I don't know, that's going to be ready in 30 days.
Right. Gotcha. Yeah, I didn't think 60.
I mean, you could do this, too. You could say, okay, the deadline for phase one is 60 days from now, however, we're going to start reviewing and awarding in 30 days.
Okay, well, no, I could be, I could be talking to it either way.
You're the argument of leaving our options open.
Yeah.
What, what the town administrator just said, with maybe softening the language, that we reserve the right, once, you know, once applications start coming in, we reserve the right to start looking at them and award if need be, but it'll stay open for the 60 days.
That would encourage people to get theirs in sooner than later. That's an incentive, yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, your point is, is well-taken, though. I mean, again, back to the survey, if the survey is telling us that number one priority is broadband, and it won't be ready in 30 days, then are we shooting ourselves in the foot by, you know, not, not allowing it? But one would assume that we aren't going to spend all of our money in round one, and there would be money available in round two.
Right, but who's going, who's going to author the broadband argument?
The tech committee is working on it right now.
Oh, the tech committee is prepared, is planning on submitting an application for ARPA funds?
Well, I, I won't speak for them, but I mean, they've, they've been entertaining to the two.
Okay.
Companies that they've, you know, had come in and do presentations, and I think their presentation, which we would have heard tonight if they'd been ready for it, would have been what they're thinking about in terms of recommendations for municipal light plant or not, yeah. And so there would be some first, first work that has to be done there. I mean, it's not the whole construction by any means, but it's all those studies and the, the poll study and all that kind of stuff that has to happen. But you can't even move on that. I mean, all we could do would be conceptually, because you've got to have two town votes, right? And, and to, for, to be a municipal light plant, you've got to have two town votes.
Right.
In two separate years. So at a minimum, we've got to get it on the May warrant to start the, if they recommend it, to start the process. You can't be a municipal light plant until you've got two successive town votes.
And the articles are due April 6th.
Yeah, separate, right, so that's why, that may come forward as a, as an idea, but, you know, other than doing.
There are certain, yeah, there are certain steps that have to follow in.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not sure where we go with that, but.
Right. And then, and then there's certain other things that, such as, you know, premium pay for employees, I have no doubt that can be ready in 30 days. You know, I've got some things in the back of my mind that, you know, I would like to bring to the select board for, you know, funding some part-time positions for those two fiscal years we can spend on to help some of the, you know, departments or boards or committees out that I have no doubt can be ready in 30 days. But I'm just thinking in the back of my mind that there are some probably much more detailed.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fair. Compromise it 45 days, that gets us like the end of April, so we start beginning of May, looking at stuff, whatever. Are we generally satisfied? Let's back up on the application. Are we generally satisfied with the application? Any?
I'm good with everything except for the second paragraph that we haven't figured out yet.
Okay, that's where we are.
Well, that's similar with the X states.
With the X date, the due date. So, yeah, I mean, if, let's, if everybody's in favor, I'm, I'm fine. If everybody thinks 60 days is good, I'm, I'm okay.
This is what I have for edits that I'll put in either to the application itself or to the first page. Ads plan on spending the funds six months before the end of the 2024 fiscal year. The application will be open for 60 days. Based on fund availability, there would be a second opportunity, a round of funding. Ads, select but reserves the right to award funds at any point during the funding window, and then ad report quarterly on expenditure of funds.
In progress towards completion.
Yeah. So quarterly progress reports, or whatever you want to say?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, and do we want to set a dollar amount, or just leave that wide open and just say that we're going to take applications without putting any dollar limit on it for round, round one or round two?
I'd, I'd prefer not to put the limits on it, but, but have the little caveat that we may, even if it says we'll continue to award until spent, or until, you know, I have no idea what's going to come out of the woodwork, but there might be this stellar proposal that takes every penny that we have, that everybody on this board says, yep, that's the one we're going to do, well, then let's just go with it. But there might be a million different proposals that come forward that everybody gets up 10%.
Right.
I'm just thinking logically, right? If, if we don't approve this tonight, the application to form, you know, subject, but even if we did, and this gets published tomorrow, March 2nd, we've got to leave it open for at least 30 days. Now we're out to April 2nd, right?
Busy with financing, budget.
If it's 30 days, if we go to 60 days, we're out, I mean, I could see the, the meeting after April 2nd, we look at it. Like, I think, you know, whatever comes in, here's the running list of what's come in.
Yeah.
The committee can decide at that point in time, you know, all right, but we're going to, we're going to leave it open for 60, but we reserve the right to start acting on it after 30 days. And then, because then we're up, again, to your point earlier, Chris, we're up almost into June, and now it's a new budget year.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so is that, that favorable to everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
I just brought this up, and you can think about it.
Yeah. We have such creative thinking tonight.
Submissions must be submitted on this application and are due by May 1st, 2022, but applications will start being reviewed and awarded at the discretion of the select board, starting on 4/01/22. A second round of applications and funding may be available starting on June 1st, 2022.
I'm okay with it, except you got to start on April Fool's Day, but that's all right. Which is a Friday, by the way.
Is that what you wrote, pretty legible, or is that pretty?
Why don't we make it do?
You've seen my writing.
Can I take a picture of it, or you want to just send me that?
I'll send it to you.
I was just going to say, why don't we do 45 days and take us to the income tax date of 4/18, and that's somewhere in the middle between 30 and 60, and gets our first round done. Because, you know, I am concerned it's going to just roll and roll and roll, and, you know, we're going to run out of road.
Well, we've got May 1st as the, the application deadline, is what Ed's proposing.
Yeah.
But we could start reviewing them.
Don't forget, the funds go until 2024, so we're talking about the rest of this year, all of next year, all of the following year.
Right.
I don't think we really have to worry about 45 versus 60 days.
Yeah.
I mean, some of these projects are going to require a little bit more detail.
Yeah.
I'm pretty comfortable with 60 days.
All right, so that goes back to the, to the May timeframe there, but in terms of reviewing them, I mean, we could do it, I mean, we would be on a regular Tuesday meeting anyway, so it would be whenever our, when is our, oh, come on. We're meeting on March 29th. We haven't set our dates yet for April, but let's throw those out. Two weeks out from there would be April 12 and April 26th. So we could say that we would start looking at them as of April 12. How's that sound? Or we could have a special meeting if we needed to.
Here we go. You're meeting April 12. Someone submits on April 12. Are you reviewing that on that night? No, of course not.
Because it won't be part of the public record.
Right.
Right.
So they have to be submitted by, we'll stick with the, stick with the April 1st, that gets it into the public packet that comes through, which then, if the packet gets posted, constituents can reach out and give their opinions to us on how they feel that should be, which we can then bring to the table. We talk about it on the 12th, get a straw poll reaction of how we're going, and kind of, it's got to be fluid, a little bit.
I mean, in order to get ready for the meeting on the 5th, we'd want.
For the what?
For a select board meeting on April 5th, we'd want materials into us by the 30th, 31st.
Select board meeting wouldn't fall on the 5th.
Do on the 12th.
It'd fall on the 12th.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, sorry. Yep, wrong one. Never mind. Okay, so, so, okay, so materials would be into us by when? April?
Any, yeah, any applications received by closing business on March 31st, because we're not open on Friday, will be, will be provided to the select board on April 12th. People can continue to submit applications after that, but it'll come in at the following select board meetings. Almost become rolling at that point. Here's what we got for an update in the past two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense? Everybody clear on that?
So we're not, we're not waiting the 60 days to review applications?
No, we can start.
We're going to, we're going to start receiving, we may not act on them.
We may not act, and we can, we could start reviewing, take a look at what's come in, get an idea what's coming in. But the deadline for applying is May 1st. Okay, so applications should, any applications received by March 31st would be able to be reviewed by, at the April 12th select board meeting.
Right.
May or may not be decided at that time. We may decide to wait until we see everything that's come in, maybe, depending, unless, we've got it, obviously, we've got some retroactive ones to do for the border health, so.
Three of them, three of them for the border health.
Right.
And I know, I know it's cost prohibitive, that it's going to cost money, but is there a way that, an easy way, that when the applications come in, that we can just, as a packet, have a spot on the website? Here they are, so that the public can look, no.
Not currently. After we, after we upgrade our website, yes.
Who's submitting that application?
With the help of the technology committee.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, we've got lots of, lots of ideas.
Notes and dates and things that you have.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we kind of done with this?
I'll make a motion to approve the application as amended on the floor.
All right.
One second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good. And so we will get those corrections made, and how are we going to distribute it? How are we going to, you're going to, you can pass it around to?
Department heads.
Department heads, committees.
Post it on the website.
Post it on the website, sure.
That's one little line, and it's easy.
Yeah, okay. All right. Everybody clear on that?
I would just ask on Florenceine, I imagine you'll be talking to the border health. They have to submit for the clinic as well as the test kits.
Yep.
As well as the.
Tracer.
Tracing. And if there's going to be a quarterly report, it'd be helpful to have now that we're, because, you know, the funds for that run out at the end of June, and I'm not sure where, where it stands, so it'd be helpful to have some report.
Okay, so they'll have to follow the same process for any ARPA funds?
Yes, they already know that.
That was, that was part of the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, motions we made to approve that was part of that.
So anything that we may have already done, they still have to report on?
Yes.
Going forward, they follow the same procedure with the application process, okay?
Well, they're going to fill out the application, too.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Okay, yeah, you, Chris, you've talked.
I've talked to Kate about filling out the application, and she knows she has to do that.
Yeah.
That there would be one coming, yeah.
Okay, because, because we approved the case tracing really early on.
Right.
And we don't really know where things are at with case tracing right now, and before, there is a request for funding beyond June 30th.
Right.
It would just be helpful to get our quarterly report.
Yeah.
Yes.
Quarterly could be the end of March, for anything that's already been approved.
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on. We have a memorandum on the inequity in the reimbursement by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for out-of-district vocational transportation. And Ed, you want to tell us about this one? This came through from, can't figure out where the other piece is that. I lost the piece. Came from the Vocational Education Advisory Committee for Charlemont, Holly, Plainfield, and Ashfield.
That was the email we got, remember?
Right.
Ask us to join this.
If we would join in with them, yeah. So basically talking about reimbursement rates that the state gives us or does not get us. And, yeah, anybody, either, either Ed, John, anybody want to talk about this? Anybody know anything about it in particular?
I think it's a great letter for those communities that are on there, but I guess, I'm assuming the numbers are similar to us, so are we just supporting their cause, asking them to do it, or are we going to substitute our own numbers in a similar letter?
I, I go with you. I think we need to represent ourselves so that we're part of this.
Yeah.
That we, they, they hear from us.
Yeah. I think it would be, I think the idea was that they were asking us to, to join in, but to do our own, I mean, that's how I interpreted it, would be to do our own letter, sort of following their, their model, maybe, if that's what I understood.
Yeah, I think it's just the last line in the second paragraph that, it may be accurate, but.
Which is the charter school, no.
It costs our four towns roughly 12,000 per year, per student, for transport.
For transport, yeah.
I mean, we know how much we spend on vocational, we know how many students there are, we can, and if it's 12,000, that's great. Then we just say it costs our town.
Yeah.
I, I think sometimes sending multiple letters is better than one letter with multiple communities.
Correct.
Signed on to it.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that. I, I would favor doing an individual, individual letter if the facts and figures are pertinent to our situation. So I guess we would have to verify some of those figures with.
So Bobby has this number.
We, she may, but we pay the vocational out of the town budget.
Out of regular, the local budget. Okay.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, well, then.
Yeah, and they just wanted a copy of any letter that we write to our legislators, sent to them, so that they can keep track of who's kind of joining in.
So I guess, I didn't see the email, but is this letter directed just towards the local representatives, or is there a specific committee?
This was.
I thought it went to a committee, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, because this isn't actually the letter, a sample, did they give us a sample letter? I can't remember. I don't think they did.
This was the only thing.
This was the communication itself that talked about the need for a letter, but they didn't actually give us kind of a boilerplate, you know, letter that they would like us to put out under our own name.
But I thought they identified a committee to submit it to.
This, yeah, it looks like a memorandum submitted to the Rural Caucus of the State Legislature.
Yeah, presentation to the Rural Caucus.
Yeah, they're requesting to make a presentation.
That'd be if they wanted to join us, but we can, we can choose to write and not necessarily make a presentation to the Rural Caucus, right? So, but they're saying that basically the vocational out-of-district town should request a substantial increase in the annual budget for the reimbursement of vocational transportation in order to bring it more in line with what regional and charter schools receive. So that's their argument here. Okay, so we would have to draft up some kind of a letter. Who would like to do that? If we, if we decide to do this, we'd have to figure out who's going to do that. But what do we think in general? Do we want to support this notion to ask for more money of whomever we're supposed to ask it of, this Rural Caucus and whoever else in, in Boston?
Yeah.
You have to be sure that we have the other, if there's more than one entity to send this to. The Division of, Director of the Division of Local Mandates was another one suggested there in her, in this note. Ben Tofoya, top of the second page there.
Just send it to as many committees that you think have any influence over this.
Yeah, so this would be a, a project in his own right, which, if anybody would like to do the research and figure out where this needs to go, I personally don't have the bandwidth to do that.
I'm just, I'm reading the second page of the bold. Please let us know.
Right.
And then, would you be willing to write to your legislators and governor?
Right.
Would you like to join us?
Right.
So I, I would, I would suggest that, I mean, I'm in favor of writing, of sending a letter, not writing the letter, sending a letter, and can we ask Mr. Sears, Chairman of the VAC Holly Town Office, for the sample of the letter that they're submitting?
Okay.
And then we could.
We could adjust it to our needs?
Right, and we can send it, and then send it to our legislative representatives, the governor and lieutenant governor.
Right.
Okay.
Our state rep, our state senator, and the governor.
Yep.
I'll make that as a. I'll make that as a, and authorize the town administrator to sign it on behalf of the Select Board.
Sounds good. I think I heard a motion there.
Sure.
Pretty close. Combination thereof, okay. Any, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, question?
I'm just wondering who should sign it. Nothing, I'm thinking about the chairs of, the chair of the school committee.
So, I think, power in numbers, Francine, you're right. So, I'll amend that, that the Select Board shall sign it, and then, the Select Board should then share it with the five school committee chairs of our district, in hopes that they, as individual committees, will send it in their individual Select Boards as well.
Okay. All right, so, with the amended motion, do we have a second on the amendment?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, we will do that. So, Ed, if you would respond to Mr. Sears, and say that we're willing to put forth a letter, but we'd appreciate having clarity in terms of a sample template.
Sure.
And then, we'll pick it up the next time around, maybe? If they get back to us quickly, okay? All right.
Point of order, it's approaching nine o'clock, could we possibly just take the PBB assignments out of order, so that the treasurer or collector could go home?
Sure. Didn't realize that was why she was sitting here. I see, okay. What do we have for PQB, Andrew?
I believe, right, if we can just, probably just skip right to the PCF for Robin Richard, Temporary Admin Clerk, Treasurer Collector, part-time. There's a PCF.
There's one in my package here somewhere, I just gotta put my fingers on it.
And the resume.
Is it Temporary Admin Clerk? Not to, I gotta find it. Not to exceed 15 hours per week, to continue to fill in while the treasurer or collector seeks a permanent replacement, rate of pay of 1925, and keep the employee at 40 hours or less.
Correct. And I'll make that as a motion.
And I'm looking here, and this is effective for what, 12 weeks? How long is a temporary?
Temporary 12 weeks, not to exceed 12 weeks, correct.
It can go up to 12 weeks.
As the board may recall, we've previously, on two occasions, approved two-week emergency appointments for this post.
Right. So, this would be a temporary, I get the wrong thing, temporary appointment.
Right.
Correct.
And that's different from the PRF that's before us as well, okay. Now, I'm just getting all my ducks in a row here, sorry.
The PRF is for the regular position.
Right.
Correct.
Right, so, this is the, up to 15 hours, or 15 hours a week, at the same pay that she's been approved at for the last couple of emergency periods, right?
Correct. And the logic behind this on why PPP approved this was for the continuity of government and to continue the functions of the collector's office, to ensure timely receipts and deposits.
And I will be the first, I am very supportive of this, number one, with the 12-week temporary appointment, we won't have any lag between trying to approve any two-week emergencies. Currently, the treasurer or collector has not had that help in her office for the past two weeks, waiting for this. I can tell you that that office is extremely busy. You know, one of my priorities, and ours, you know, going forward, is trying to have the vendor Kern Schiff CPA complete and close our fiscal year '21 books by the end of March, including Schedule A. We're having weekly meetings with Lisa Kelly from that firm at this point in time. The treasurer or collector's office is getting not only tax bills, water bills, but also excise, tax bills are coming back, and are stacked up, and whatever.
Yeah, we have the excise bills coming in, and we're about to issue the water bills, about to issue the state bills.
Yeah, and Jen can tell you much better than I can of everything that's going on in her office, but I think this would be a very good move to keep the continuity of operations going, and help to keep things up to date in that office until she gets some decent resumes and applications back, and hopefully hire a person for that job.
Yeah, the position's posted.
Like, we can take that one up next.
No, take that, so, let's take a look at the PCF first, so, we have the motion, right?
Correct.
The motion for the 12-week temporary appointment for Robin Richard, for the treasurer or collector's office. It's a maximum of 15 hours, is that right?
Yes.
For 1925 an hour, and that 15 hours is split up, she's working also at Highway Department, so this is like two, three?
Yeah, it's like three or four hours in the afternoon after the highway.
Okay. All right, so, we have motion on the table, do I hear a second on this?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Where does this stand in the, so, there was an emergency appointment, right?
That's, there's been two, two, two-week emergency appointments, I believe, right?
Correct.
So, this is...
This is a temporary 12-week appointment.
So, this is the interim, right?
I'd have to go back and look at the PPP manual, because...
You're like replacing a department head, I believe.
No, it has to do with, one of the terms has to do with utilizing an existing employee, and the other is utilizing someone from, that is not an existing employee.
Oh, right.
Yeah. But, my recollection is temporary is inside, using an existing employee to fill that position, and interim is from outside, I could have that wrong.
That sounds like that would be logical.
That makes sense.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we have...
This rate is the same rate that she's currently receiving for the other job, and that was what the issue was?
Right.
Correct.
And the money's in the budget?
Oh, yeah.
Correct, there'll be a surplus.
Yeah, there'll still be a surplus.
Okay. Yeah.
15 hours.
Yeah. Okay, so, with that, if no further questions, let's have a vote, please, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, approved.
And then, the other item related to the treasurer's office is the PRF, and that is a clarification or modification to a previously approved PRF for the same purposes. The only modification is, is the previous PRF approved by PPP, and then approved by this board, had the pay scale slash salary at a fixed rate of 17 and change, whatever the current budget number is.
1754.
This is 1754, this is changing it to reflect what the approved range is, $11 to 2416, in hopes to broaden the pool for applicants.
But this is to hire a temporary.
The P...
Yeah, I mean, it's 30 hours a week temporary, but this, we can't, why is this a temporary?
Well, then, we can withdraw it, well...
Why is it a...
Scratch the temporary, I mean, the intent is to find the permanent replacement.
Jen, is this temporary?
But it says to hire a temporary employee.
To hire a temporary employee.
Yeah, it should be the replacement up top, no?
Yep.
So...
Do you wanna go to this, you wanna go to this?
Do you wanna see what you wrote?
No, I know what I wrote.
Okay.
I know it's temporary, so, Jennifer Day, Treasurer Collector, I know there has been, you know, Ed and I have talked, and I've talked with a few of the Select Board members, about rearranging my office, and I know, you know, there are some that seem to be on board with that. So, my thought was that I didn't want to hire a permanent position, and then have to cut their hours afterwards. So, I'm not sure, I've asked that question, like, where are we at with that? 'Cause if it's not going to happen, then I'll just post for the permanent, but if there's a chance that it's going to happen, I don't wanna hire permanent. I just want to hire temporary, you know?
I think...
So, that was where, that's why we haven't posted for the permanent position.
Let me just intervene, I, for one, am not, I've heard mention of reorganization, but I've not heard any details, so, I would not assume that everybody here on the Select Board knows.
I didn't say everybody.
No.
That's a few.
We don't know enough to respond to you, so, if I'm not mistaken, the treasurer and so, I think you were up next meeting for a quarterly report, or you're...
15th.
Yeah, the 15th. Could we possibly hold this, so we understand what you're, I'm assuming you're gonna talk to us about the reorganization then, or not?
Yeah, I could do that.
That would be one way to do that.
Would that be, would that be the appropriate avenue, or would it be through the budget process?
I don't know.
Well, that's what I thought, I thought it would happen through the budget process, because I didn't think that my office was the only one included in this, so, I didn't know if it was something that I had to introduce.
Well, it's all a mystery, so, if anybody can clarify it.
So...
Hiring a temporary employee for the 30 hours a week would not preclude hiring that person as a permanent one, if that office went on, the way it is currently designed. But however, it would allow for a reorganization of that office, if it were going to be open additional hours on Fridays, and this position would be reduced in hours.
So, it's allowing the possibility, pending budget hearings, review processes, and short of nothing changing, the job could then be flipped through the PPP process to make that a permanent position.
Correct.
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 Okay.
But in the meantime, this would get posted, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's leaving, yes, you're right.
So, it'd get posted, and somebody's gonna say, well, this is a temporary position, I don't really want this.
Yeah.
Right.
Aren't you, aren't you cutting yourself off, in terms of possibilities, for people that are interested in the position?
I agree with that, that, yeah, there's not as many applicants, 'cause it's temporary, but I do have two right now that I'm going to interview, and they're...
How can you interview before you post?
Oh, they're the last posting.
Well, the posting, so, that's the question, I guess I have, too, 'cause the actual posting doesn't give a range.
Right.
So, it's been posted, but it doesn't say that in the actual posting.
So, does this not have...
So, do I really need to repost, even though it's been posted, or, you know what I mean?
Do you have to post it?
It's still posted.
Repost it for the same amount of time again, before you can interview, another 10 days, or whatever?
Even though the posting's not changing, just the range is changing.
I understand, the only thing, that you're authorized to post it, which you did.
Yeah.
And you're only, right now, you're only authorized to offer 1754, period.
Correct. 1729.
1729. And that this was just leaving the posting in place, but modifying it to the range, $11 to 2416.
Yes.
Did the original posting that we approved have the word temporary in there?
Yes.
Yeah.
It doesn't have a range, or, it doesn't have a range or pay rate. It doesn't have any pay rate in there at all, the posting itself, that people see.
If we take no action on this, what's before us now, you can still move forward with your interviews, because I'm assuming we're not gonna vote to rescind the authorization. You just, it's a fixed dollar amount.
Okay.
At least for the purposes of doing your interviews.
Until you go through budget hearings.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, wouldn't that make more sense?
All right.
I mean...
I honestly think this was an attempt with the best interest in mind from all parties, and the fact that I'm usually 72 hours behind in answering the town administrator's emails. Everyone's just trying to cover their bases here.
Yes.
But if you've got an existing PRF from which you can interview and possibly hire...
Yeah.
You could...
But only up to 1729, and I just think that one, or, I don't know about, there's, the candidates, I feel, are over, like, have too much experience to not have a range.
Right. So, this one, conversely to your earlier comment about temporary being perhaps a downer to somebody applying, this would actually open it up, and actually attract additional people because of that higher range.
But, right, because the first posting said temporary, which this is continuing to say temporary, but no posting ever mentions a dollar range, so the two potential candidates coming forward have no idea, unless they're watching within our minutes, that it's a fixed dollar amount. Again, I move that we act to abolish the PPP.
Little out of order, little out of order there. But I guess, the question, we don't have, right now, if you wanted to hire somebody now, and you're working on the existing budget through the end of June, that's at 17, right? We don't have 2416.
Well, at this point, there would be, at this point, there would be extra in it, because I've only had someone in there working 15 hours a week, or not at all. So, there's definitely extra in that budget right now.
Come July 1st, it would be different.
Come July 1st, it would have to be increased, you know, that line would have to be increased, depending on, but, so, for the budget, but there would be extra money in there now. So, I don't know.
Okay, anybody have any further thoughts on this?
It's not benefited, correct, temporary positions are not benefited, does that say that in the first?
So, temporary positions, you are required to give them health insurance under Chapter 32B.
Correct.
Yeah, but they wouldn't get, they wouldn't get any of the other benefits.
And what about leave and all that stuff?
Disability, if something happened, or?
No, they would not be covered by the disability clause.
Yeah.
It would not be covered by sick or vacation time.
Because, and the disability clause, too, you have to work for at least six months before you can use that, so...
Or no sick or vacation time, either.
No sick or vacation, no.
Or personal, or bereavement.
And they're on a...
Nothing.
Are they on a probationary period? Probationary period for these?
No, I don't think so, I don't think that would apply for a 12-week temporary.
I'd have to look if they were converted into a, if they were converted into a...
Permanent position.
Permanent, and I hate to use the word permanent, because nothing's permanent. I believe that their time, I'd have to check, I think their time in the temporary may count towards their probationary period.
I feel like it doesn't.
I'd have to double check.
It hasn't in the past.
Yeah, I'd have to double check.
For other people, yeah. So, their time when they were officially hired was, started as their first day of benefited time, rather than their temporary hire, but that's other people in the past, one being in my office, so...
Usually, the PRF does say something about benefits on here, so, it might be good to put that on there. I prefer it said Select Board instead of Board of Selectmen. And has this been approved by the Finance Committee?
No, 'cause they haven't met.
They have not yet, met yet.
Oh, I don't, yeah, when, are they having meetings, or no, not at all yet?
Well, they need to be having meetings, and John said he had reached out to the Chair of the Finance Committee, so hopefully, you'll be hearing about that soon.
I had, I had sent a copy of this to the Chair of the Finance Committee to place on their next agenda, but I have not seen a meeting be getting posted for that, as of yet.
Is there a motion on the table?
I think there might have been a motion, I'm not sure that we had...
I believe there was a motion, I can't remember if there was a second or not.
I don't know if I heard a second.
I don't think there was a second, yeah.
I think we jumped into discussion, quite honestly.
I'll second it.
All right, so, we're back to, still discussing, but yes. So, just to be clear, so, we've got a PRF already in place, you can work with that. This would be, this would not, this would be posted to substitute for that, or not?
Well, the posting would still be the same, and it's still posted, so, I'm not, it wouldn't really change.
It would be an amendment to the posting, with the new...
I don't have the rate in the posting.
Right.
That's the only change.
I think that's an important change.
Yeah.
But I'm not gonna, yeah, I don't put it in.
And what about the 12 before, because something was posted, and then it was amended, and it was, it didn't open, it didn't accommodate other people that might apply because of the change in the rate.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if people, people thought that the 17 wasn't advantageous, they're not gonna apply, so if they don't know that this exists, then you...
The dollar amount's not in the actual posting that the people, that, people that are applying see.
This is just gonna authorize that there is a rate, if it gets to that point.
Okay.
The post, like Jen says, the post, this is the PRF, this is not the posting. The posting itself will not have, still not have the rates in it.
A rate, this would change it from a rate to a range, 'cause what we already approved is a rate.
Okay.
If I have to, I mean, I'll have Robin for the 12 weeks, so I guess that's fine, if it has to be posted again for, you know, another 10 days to two, 10 days or two weeks, or yeah, so...
So, I'm confused, is there a motion?
Yes, there was a motion and a second.
Did I make the motion? What did I say?
You made the motion.
I withdraw my motion. I'll make the following motion, because I don't remember what it is. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the PRF, which modify, which removes, modifies a previously approved PRF by this board by replacing a single hourly rate to that of the range in accordance with the scoring, and that interviews may begin immediately based on applicants already received, but no hiring decision may be made until the posting is updated for 10 public days, 10 business days.
Okay.
So that way, those that have already applied, that are probably a week or two in, they can go through the interview process, the department head can explain, I have to leave the posting open for another two weeks, and try to accommodate both.
And in the meantime, Finance Committee would also meet to be able to sign off on this.
Have you scheduled the interviews yet, or you're just, you're still waiting?
I haven't yet, I, I wanted to actually, but I just haven't even had time to think about it.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a?
Do you want to make it pending, the Finance Committee, or no?
Sure.
All right, all right, could I have a second, then?
The, yeah, no hiring shall happen until the Finance Committee approves it.
Right.
So I'm just trying not to delay interviews for those that are applied.
Right, yeah.
Which is appreciated.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a, a motion that no hiring, the last piece of that motion, no hiring would take place, interviews can start, but no hiring would take place.
Finance.
Until it's posted for 10 days and Finance Committee signs off, right?
Yep.
All right, if no further discussion, could we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'll have a second.
All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
You too.
All right. Goodness, we're going to get off track here. All right, let's go back on track and see if we can knock out a few things here quickly, somewhat.
Do we already do the other PCFs?
Um, we didn't do the other PCFs, do you want to stay on them while we're here?
I'll make a motion to, oh, okay.
Yeah, there's...
I forgot we were out of order.
Yeah, we, we've got to go back to some new business, but that's fine, we've got, let's just, we're in PCFs, why don't we do them while we're here?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Daniel Hurley. It is a part-time, non-benefited position, it's actually a leave of absence.
And this is for the Police Department.
Right, military obligations and long-term deployment, this is approval of it, and I just wanted to, well, I'll leave it at that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And just to note that Mr. Hurley wrote a very nice letter to the Chief, talking about his time here in Southampton, and how much he appreciates the camaraderie and the work here in town. Okay, so we have a PCF for Daniel Hurley, leave of absence, Police Department. Could I have a second, please?
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving forward, another one, ready?
Yeah, there's another one for Stephen Jeffers, and that is a part-time, non-benefited position. And on that.
It's a resignation.
The Police Department.
Resignation.
It's a resignation, actually. Uh, it's not noted on our agenda, but it's a resignation.
And it's attributable to the Police Reform Act, which Ian warned us about.
Right.
Right, so, okay, so this is a resignation for Stephen Jeffers, could I have a second, please?
A second.
All right.
And likewise, sent a wonderful letter, just speaks to the great job that our Police Chief does in creating a respectful and professional environment.
Yeah, and also congratulating the, the work of the dispatchers, so, very good. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved, and one last one, I think?
Is David Zagorski, this is a extended, another 12-week interim appointment. He has been temporary employment in the Assessor's Office in the absence of a principal assessor, and is, this is a request to extend his appointment for another 12 weeks. This has been signed off. I'm a PQB Town Accountant and Chair of the Board of Assessors, April West.
And they've gone into great detail about the, where the budget is coming from and how much money they have in the budget, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
So it looks like that's covered pretty well, from what I see here, okay. All right, could I have a second to that motion?
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of all of our PCFs, I believe, thank you. I think that's everybody, everybody. All right, so now let's go on to the rail banking agreement, Ed.
Sure.
And this is just some initial discussion and vote, maybe, if we can do that, and see where we are with it first. I'll let you run through it.
Sure, and this was drafted by Katie Klein from KP Law, and then it had a few amendments to it from the Attorney for the Railroad. Katie Klein is fine with the amendments, which the Attorney for the Railroad has made to the agreement, so it is here for your approval. The only thing I will let you know is that for everything to move forward, once the Select Board agrees to this and the process starts, we will probably end up actually going through all the steps and physically closing on the right-of-way somewhere between December 31st, 2022, and June 30th, 2023.
Whoa, really?
Wow.
Why so long? We, we had planned a whole lot less than that.
Well, don't, don't, don't forget, it was about six weeks between when Katie actually sent him the first draft of this, and actually, he got back to her. So now going forward, it is, it just has pushed all those timelines for all the rail, the, going before the, being approved for rail banking and everything else that we need to do.
But a lot of that work has got to be done on the railroad side, right? I mean, there's not, we've done what we've got to do, it's really on the railroad side, that's...
Right, which we have.
No control over.
No control over, exactly. I will, I will, I will let the Board know that I've already reached out on our two existing grants, requesting extensions for them for this, and because one of those grants is a Mass Trails grant, Amanda Lewis asked me about the one we currently have in, which would actually be a fiscal 2023 grant. I have to follow up with a timeline for her, but I have told her that because of the fact that we could actually start with actually having this designed prior to the actual physical closing, that we would still be able to make that deadline for the amount of money we have to reach the plateau of expending those funds towards the design of the Greenway.
So some of that money was coming from the Housing Choice Grant that we got, the PVPC early, wherever that first grant came from.
Correct.
That first hundred thousand.
That, that's the one that...
Would go toward acquisition normally, right, or?
Well, they, actually, both, both that and the Mass Trails go to, go to, towards acquisition. So the, the Small Town Capital from, from Housing, Department of Housing, had a deadline of June 30th, 2022. So that I have reached out to them, asking for an extension and telling them the circumstances. And then, like I say, I've also reached out to Amanda Lewis and the Mass Trails Grant for the acquisition, which, she's gonna, she's gonna talk to her cohort there and figure out what the best way to do this is. Is it an extension, or they may just not have us enter into a fiscal year 22 contract, because we won't be actually expending any funds towards that reimbursable grant in fiscal year 22, and just doing a contract for fiscal year 23 with us.
Yeah, because our timeline originally had been June 30th on the rail banking.
Correct.
So six to, almost a year later.
Well, Katie said, Katie's, because of now dealing with this particular attorney, is, she said, ask for a year's extension as a worst-case scenario, and she said, probably in, in reality, we may be able to actually get it done by December, December 31st.
Didn't we already get an extension on one of these grants?
Yeah.
No, not on one of these.
No, on the Housing Choice one?
No, which one?
Oh, we, no, we talked about, we'd approached them, asking if they'd be willing to, I think, at one point in time, but, yeah, no, it was on, on the other one. Yeah, I guess, well, it's unfortunate, I mean, I guess I worry that it's going to damage our, our going forward with the grant that we just put in for the design work. I mean, why would Mass Trails want to do that when we don't have possession of the property yet?
And we also have Conservation Commission is doing their design of their trail.
Right.
Correct, so that plays into their actual request to go off of it, so, you know, if their timeline doesn't line up, I would say, no.
Well, but we get, we need to understand that better, because my understanding was, they didn't need to do anything with the rail trail itself, they just want to go farther down from the, from the entrance where they currently have.
Yeah, they just, and it's for design.
They're not doing anything with the rail trail, they're just going to be beside it, is what I understood. And we'd already told them that they could store materials on the trail area if they needed to.
They do not have that permission from Pioneer Valley Railroad as of yet.
Well, that's been asked for a long time, then these, yeah.
I specifically asked what materials, and for how long, and when it would start, and I haven't heard back, so that's in CONCOM's hands.
That's going to be the new design with, if they don't have to do some of the, the bench cutting there.
But the new entrance would come off the right-of-way for the rail trail, which we don't own.
Can we request in the interim that they, I mean, we're in, we're in negotiations with them, we're signing an offer, a purchase and sale agreement, we're doing our due diligence as a town, and going, and banking off of creating this trail and buying this property, can we have permission from the railroad to just have a design of the rail, of the trail going off of being the entryway from there?
You can design anything you want, the key is, when are they going to implement and do that? And they cannot do that until we actually own the right-of-way.
I, I understand that, but with, within the standard...
So the question becomes, do you actually want to spend the money to design it?
Design it.
Right.
But if we're, if we're entering an offer...
That puts another grant, that puts the other Mass Trails grant in jeopardy. I mean, this is, this is not, you know, I'm not pleased, to say the least. It's been a hell of a lot of work that's gone into Mass Trails grants, to end up with one person sitting in wherever he sits to drag his feet to get this going with us.
Don't start on me with that, because it all goes back to CONCOM and...
I'm not talking about CONCOM, I'm talking about what, you know, we had gone through and, and when we wrote the grant, we had gone to our lawyers, and the lawyers had talked to the railroad and gave us a timeline of what had to be done for all the steps, and that's why we did it that way in the grant. And to have, you know, at least a six-month delay is, you know, more than unfortunate, but we'll take our chances with this. But why, what's the point of signing it tonight? What are we signing for, then, if they're not ready to do anything?
We're starting the process, do you want to delay the process anymore?
No, I definitely don't.
Okay, that's why I'm recommending that it gets signed, approved, and signed tonight.
All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the offer to purchase an interim trail use rail banking agreement with the representation that the version before us has been approved by legal counsel, and that we sign it without haste, and we notify whatever authorities that we need, that we're moving this along as fast as we can.
Yeah.
So that we're not the ones delaying this.
All right, I'll second that.
All right.
Can I ask a question, Ed? Can you remind me, a couple of years ago, we ended up doing an analysis of the culverts on the rail, Ed? Do you remember that?
No, I do not.
We've got a report on it, tied in bonded or something.
Okay, my question is, how is that done without owning the property?
No idea, but it was done back in 2017.
I'm just curious, I mean, it was a while ago, I just remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
There was a whole lot of work done back then. All right, so we have a motion to approve and sign the rail banking agreement as is tonight, and no further discussion, can we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are approved. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, closeout of fiscal 21 update. You've mentioned it briefly earlier, but I, it was maybe, I don't know if you had more to say about that, but...
Yeah, I'll go into a little more detail, is we are having weekly meetings, we did get an extension with DOR through March 31st, we are actually making decent progress heading in that direction. Bradley's been fantastic with getting information back to Lisa on that, I know there's still some more work that Bradley and I have to do in that endeavor, Lisa's also working with the Treasurer Collector as far as receivables go, and some of the deduction accounts for fiscal year 21 and 22. I want to stay on this and keep moving forward as much as possible, because I know that both Bradley and Ellen will be going to the UMass training, which is coming up in, in a couple of weeks, so I know they'll, that's on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, so we'll miss that weekly meeting, and basically, it shoots most of that week. But I, next week, I'd like to spend, without doing anything else, a couple of days with Bradley, trying to shorten up what questions Lisa has for him, because a lot of it is historic, I sat up there for about half an hour with Lisa on the phone today while Bradley was going over some things with her, and was able to answer some questions that Bradley, Bradley did not know the history to, so. This is, right now, my number one priority to get, to get done, and like I say, I still feel we are on the track to make that March 31st deadline.
Okay. All right. All right, any questions about that? We don't have any, any, I think you said that you had done something in terms of an extension about the Schedule A, right? We've got some leeway on that?
Yes, that, that the DOR has approved our extension request to March 31st.
Okay. All right, okay, next then, budget process for FY '23. I'm assuming all the budgets are in and sent over where they need to be sent, to Finance?
Yes, everything has been sent over to Finance, just waiting for a schedule back for them for their meetings with any of the departments, they want to go over those with.
Okay. So at this point in time, so that maybe John can have some clarity before he meets with them, are we in agreement that we would like to have a joint meeting with Finance to also just economize everybody's time to go through maybe our, I don't know, our bigger departments from Highway, Police, and Fire as a joint, separate, separate meetings? I mean, only one, I'm thinking they might only be one topic a night? I don't know what's real, I have no idea how long these would take.
Well, the email I posed to the Chair was that would, that we, I was asked to see if they would be willing to have a joint session, and I was thinking it was a Finance meeting, and the Board of Selectmen would join them, select persons would join them, they would pretty much drive it.
Yeah.
And then we would participate in Q and A.
Yeah.
Through the process, and I listed those three departments.
Okay.
What about General Government?
No, I was, the list I, the list I, that I remembered us talking about was Police, Fire, and Highway. I can, I can modify it.
Well, we've got, we've got your own budget, too, right? We could do that as a joint session, no?
Well, mine's, mine would mostly be, it falls into the townwide, which is, falls into some of the stuff that Treasurer Collector has put in on the townwide portion as far as like retirement and whatever, so.
But would Jen normally be going to the, to the FinCom to defend her budget request?
If they, if they want to go through that, correct.
If they want it, yeah. Okay, well, at least, do we have, is everybody in favor of having a joint meeting, joining in on a joint meeting with Finance? joining in on a joint meeting with Finance for these, at least these three departments?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then I'm not going to ask for a motion. I hear all the heads nodding and I think everybody's saying yes. So that would be what you can take back to FinCom and let us know of any scheduling. But that would not preclude them scheduling meetings with other entities that have come before them or that need to come before them to talk about their budget, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We want to get those done, what, during the month of March, basically, right? Because we need to have time to do our own budget reviews and get this ready to be able, what day did we say for the warrant now? April what, 6th?
Correct.
So we need to have a final budget ready by then? Okay. So lots to do in the month of March.
The actual warrant has to be posted at least a week prior to the annual town meeting. So we will need it by around, yeah. And to sign it by the, probably around the 20th, 21st.
The second meeting or something of April?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, that, still, it's going to be a huge haul, knowing what we usually go through for budget issues here.
Procedurally wise, do we normally wait until it's gone through Finance before we see a consolidated budget? Like, do we see, here's all the requests that came in, this is what it looks like, and then the next column is Finance adjustments. And here, do we see a work in progress or do we wait until the end and see what comes out of Finance?
See a work in progress.
So when will we see that, if all the budgets are in?
I can have Bradley start to work on making sure that it's all in that one spreadsheet and not separate.
And does that include revenues as well?
It will. I'm still working on the revenue side of things.
Okay.
In the past, we've had like a budget one, which would be, you know, level serviced. And then more of a, you know, request.
There are two tabs in the request spreadsheet again this year. Basically, level funded plus contractual increases would be tab one. And then the wish list would be the tab two.
Okay. So we'll have, if you can have Bradley be working on that, that would be good. I think we saw something today with, it's not on the agenda at all, but a revenue report through December. We did see that. And you said that they're working on things with Jen for January postings at least.
Correct.
So I'm hoping that by the end of the month, as we close out fiscal '21, right?
Well, I'm still shooting for that March 15th. However, like I said, with the caveat, the fiscal year '21 and the Schedule A has priority to me over that. But I was, I was up with Bradley today going over the draft of the estimated revenues to put into the revenue report. So we have something to compare to.
And what about, I think John had made the comment a couple of meetings ago about just sending the statement of accounts to the various committees so they could figure out themselves and say, okay, I agree with this, I don't agree with this, and make it easier.
In fact, two of the things that Lisa and Bradley were working on last week was conservation and CPC. So as those, I think they're through with cons, I got one other adjustment to conservation that needs to be made. But then Bradley can send that to them. He's already sent the one to Planning Board.
Okay.
And Paul got back to us with, he was good with that, so.
Okay. Well, if, if he could, because I know CONCOM's meeting on the 7th, you said, right? So that would be good if, if they could possibly have it for their meeting, that would be helpful. But, okay, good. All right, next. Where are we? Okay. Town Administrator Evaluation Process. All right. So everybody has given me their evaluations. Ed has given his self-evaluation, which we've all seen. You've all given me your evaluations. And I've gone through and consolidated scores. One of the things I wanted to do, though, was talk about, I don't know that we fully talked about the process. If we did, I don't have it in my own notes. But when I went back and took a look at how we've done this in the past, basically, what we've done is have all these scores consolidated and comments consolidated, scores average, sorry, comments consolidated. And then the board has delegated to the chair to discuss that draft evaluation, final evaluation, whatever you want to call it, with Ed, and then bring it forth to the following Select Board meeting. And then we would each go through and everybody read out a couple of the questions. So it was like, Joy would take one and two, me four and five, whatever, and go through the 10 or 11 elements on the, on the performance evaluation and read out the average score and the comments from the collective Select Board in public. That's what we've done in the past. If everybody is agreeable, I would kind of like to continue that process unless somebody has some objections.
I think that's fine. I think it's a good way to handle, handle it.
I mean, most people don't have a public evaluation.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, to the extent that, you know, we will report out the comments and the average score for each of the elements that are rated. That will be public for sure. But rather than taking up time going through line by line by line of the evaluation in public, I don't know. Any thoughts? You've done this twice now.
No, I think we did it the first time that way, where we just took turns. And, you know, it is a public, you know, it doesn't qualify for executive session because performance eval should be public. And so I think we did it that way the first time.
In 2020, when I went back and looked at my notes on it.
And then the second time around, it coincided with his contract.
Right. Yeah.
So it was, we did put things into the contract that were part of the evaluation. So it was not public, and that was something I reviewed with him separately. So yeah, I think that's fine, so long as he gets a copy of it beforehand.
Right. No, that's what I wanted to do. Yeah. So that's, that's one of the things I wanted to do. So could I have a motion then to, to that effect?
Okay. I'll move to authorize the chair to consolidate the, everyone's evaluations of the town administrator, meet with the town administrator to have that discussion, and then come back to the group. And publicly, we would, we would go through the scoring and the comments that were included in that final evaluation form.
Right. Okay. Could I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? I would just say that I tried to do this.
So at what point do we see the consolidated version?
Before, at the same time that I would give it to Ed.
Okay.
So we'd have the combined scores, average scores, and combining the commentary. And then this would allow me to meet with Ed on it, let him know that ahead of time, and then we'd bring it forth, I would say, on the 15th.
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
All right. Did I hear a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's what we'll do. So we'll plan that for the 15th. FY '21 Audit Process. And here, I think we were still talking about what we wanted to do for whether we were going to think about a one-year arrangement, just to get something online for this year's audit. Do a one-year arrangement and then go out potentially and compete the task with other audit firms for a longer contract. No matter what we do, we don't have money in the budget right now, correct? I mean, we're using the money toward Kinsheriff right now, but we put.
No, we still, we just do not have enough.
We don't have enough money in the budget. Okay, we have, that's right. We do have the $21,000 or something in the budget. But we don't have enough money based on what the first estimate was anyway from Melanson for a one-year audit. And so any further thoughts on that? Have you had a chance to talk to them at all and see whether they're? I mean, I guess we were all kind of shocked at the price, right? I'm forgetting it was what, another $10,000 or something, or more?
10 or 11, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
For the audit. I mean, I don't know. To me, it still feels like, you know, with, with the money that we've been spent, been spending on, on having a professional CPA firm come in and do this, I would hope that we won't have so many glitches. I understand that Melanson wants to double-check everything, knowing what we've been through. But I would just wonder if we didn't have a possibility of having a little bit of a break on that? Or do we have to really enter into a contract for that amount?
Well, we'd have to enter into at least a proposal, an agreement, you know, contract, whatever you call it. But all I could do now is probably try to identify funds that it looks like may not be spent between now and May. You know, so we could either do a transfer at the annual town meeting or through the departmental transfer process, which means that they won't be able to start the actual audit until May.
Okay. Thoughts, anybody about that? Do we want to, I mean, I think we were kind of leaning, correct me if I'm wrong. My memory said that we were leaning toward a one-year and then putting it out to a couple of audit firms just to see who else was out there. Not that we're dissatisfied with Melanson, but just for the principle of setting a good model about how to do competitive bidding as such. Any, any particular thoughts?
Remind me what the second-year amount was?
I don't remember offhand. We can bring it back next time.
It was more than we're currently spending.
Doing 21 now?
Huh?
Is it 21 now?
Yeah, and I think it was like 26.
For the second year? Yeah?
I can go check.
No, no, don't, don't.
No, 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 no.
Well, actually, no, I can't go check because my laptop's there.
It's probably sitting right here.
It's not up to the network.
It's fine. No, I mean, it was, it was a higher amount for this first year, but then, yeah.
It went from 21 to 36 and then down to 31.
Or something like that.
No, it started at 36 and I think it was 26 and 26, or 26.5 and 26.5.
Okay. Well, how about then, at this point, we won't make any decision tonight, but let's put this on the, on the agenda maybe for next time to see if you can identify potential sources of funding, do you think?
I can.
From other, other lines that might not be fully spent? And then we can figure out then that, okay, this is our choice. We, we need to make a, at least accept an offer or whatever you want to call it.
Or we can make it loss of revenue.
Yeah, right.
So what was the rationale again for the high year-one amount?
They know there's going to be issues with doing the fiscal year '21.
And they also said that they were losing staff, that in order to keep people, they had to increase their salaries. Therefore, they increased their rate to us.
Yeah.
And that follows in year two and three also.
Yeah.
Like I say, they also know that there's going to be more issues with the 20, you know, looking through the '21 audit. And there usually is.
Do we have to go to bid anyway?
No.
Don't have to. But it was more a question of, you know, do we want to just do a three-year with Melanson and just keep on doing it without seeing what else is out there? And I, I don't know.
I'm not in favor of that.
I'm not either.
Okay. That's where I thought we left it last time, that we wanted to, we were okay to do a one-year, but then at the same time, put out a request for proposals to be able to at least see who else is out there. They may turn in on the three-year contract and we may end up going with them anyway. But it doesn't lock us into only them without looking to see what else is out there, which I think just is a best practice in my mind of trying to.
I guess what I don't understand is they've set the price to do our '21 audit based on what they think happened. But we hired a company to come in and clean it up, and so it may not be as challenging. Is there any flexibility there?
Didn't seem to be. I mean, I'd turn it around on that comment and say, okay, they're probably also aware that, well, Bradley will know most of the stuff that Kinsheriff has done to adjust them. There probably won't be any ability to go back and actually for Melanson to question them in the future, so.
I don't know. Just, it just seems like, rather than just doing it internally, we've gone out of our way to pay good money to get a professional entity in here to correct things that we are pretty sure have some errors, that they ought to be able to say, okay, well, you know, let's, let's go with you a little bit here, given our past history with them. I guess I really still am not thrilled with the idea of the price. But I think we'll have to take a look at it next time around if you can figure out if there's some other funds that we can do to bump up the '21 that we currently have budgeted.
Is there any recourse on the amount, what you can understand, that they quoted?
Doesn't seem to be.
Doesn't seem to be. I mean, this is open-ended. The other thing I, we could do is say, okay, do you want to just quote us an hourly rate? That has a pro and a con to it.
Yeah.
I'm not going there.
Doesn't sound like a good idea.
I don't think so.
I was just going to re, I mean, we have been happy with their service. I'm just wondering if we could negotiate a little bit on a three-year. But paying that much when you have a professional organization coming in and doing it just seems, and I don't know, I'm crazy about finding money in other lines without having an official transfer.
Right.
That can't happen timely either.
Can't happen until May anyway, so. All right. Well, let's, let's hold off on any decision on one-year, three-year, Melanson or not. And we'll look to see what funds we can scrape up from other places that may not be spent. And then take a look at it again on our next pass-through. Okay? All right. With that, any other business that can't wait until our next meeting on the 15th of March? Not knowing of any offhand. All right. We don't have any licenses or permits, no warrants tonight. We do have the designer selection process to sign before we leave, yes? We have that ready to sign?
Yes.
And that was what we did a couple of weeks ago about the RFQ process.
Yep.
And then we have minutes to approve for December 21 and January 4th.
Motion to approve December 21st.
Okay. Do you want to hear a second?
Second.
Anybody have any comments about it, any?
I do, on page two, under the quarter of the reports. The second bullet.
Yep.
On council of age, on aging. Just clarify, the COA received $40,000 from the town for its annual budget. I mean, it sounds like it was an additional, you know what I'm saying? That's all.
What was that?
Oh, just, yeah, to add a couple of words at the last part of, the second bullet, so yeah. Okay, I see what you mean. Francine commented that the COA.
The operating budget.
Receives $40,000 as the operating budget from the town.
And the rest comes from outside sources.
Yeah. Just to add in.
On the December 21st?
Yeah, it's on the second bullet, point, quarterly report, last line.
On page one?
Two.
Page two.
That's why I can't find it.
Page two, second bullet, last line.
So the COA received $40,000 as the operating budget.
From the town.
Add those words in, "from the town," and the rest comes from outside services. Okay?
Got it.
All right. Anything else offhand?
No.
Okay. All right. And all those in favor of the minutes on December 21? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved, okay. And then minutes of.
Motion to approve January 4th, 2022 minutes.
January 4th.
A second.
All right. Any notations, comments on any of these? Don't think I saw anything. I didn't have anything marked on here.
Very detailed, as usual.
Yeah, very detailed. And this is why these are taking so long. I guess that's a question too with her. We do talk a lot, obviously, at three-hour meetings. So I don't know, I'm sure it's not easy to listen to all these tapes of all this. But she does manage to consolidate things in spite of all that. So I have a motion and a second. Can I have an approval of vote, please? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion approved. All right, minutes are approved. Very good. Don't know that we have, okay, we don't have any updates. Do we add on anything on the pending items as usual? Old Town Hall, Clearwater, we were going to have Clearwater, the lawyers were going to write a letter on that one?
Correct. Yeah, they're drafting us a letter.
Okay.
Charter, no, DOJ.
Yeah, East Street, the VHB tip, they're going to get back to us with.
Yep, with the second part of it.
All right. And we have meetings on March 15th and March 29th?
Correct.
Okay. I think that covers the agenda. We don't have an executive session tonight. Do we have one next week or no?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have it, have it for dispatch and police.
Okay. All right. So with that in mind, could I have a motion to adjourn tonight?
I move to adjourn.
All right.
9:51.
Yep. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Adjourn, but don't leave before you sign a couple of things.